Motion says it would go up on November eighteenth and down November nineteenth, but I think that's a missed friend.
Yes.
Probably should be before the fair.
Yeah. But the fear.
See, it probably go up if it's November eighteenth, this is already November first, so it seems like it could go up as soon as possible.
Yeah, typically we've been doing thirty days.
But I guess I'd be, well, I'd be looking for a, for a motion to allow it to be posted November second and to be removed by, by November nineteenth, the day after. I authorize our lady of the valley to place a sign on the island at the top of Maple Street advertising O L V's Holiday Fair in November, on November second, twenty twenty-three, the sign must be removed on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Second. Motion made second, all those favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Conservation agent Isabella Genova, she on?
She unfortunately had a conflict this evening. She was unable to attend, but Jen O'Neil and myself, we both, as well as Carl, we all sat in on an interview with her. We were very impressed with her skills, U B M graduate, environmental sciences, she grew up in the community, she's moved back. She is a, a smart woman who I think can, you know, handle the job and learn. I got an email from Carl today saying that basically he is in favor of her appointment and he has a contact that, he is going to refer her to that could help her transition into the role of the conservation agent. So it would be my recommendation that the board appoint her as a, as our conservation agent.
I agree with David, she was so impressive when we met with her about a week and a half ago. Just, she just understands conservation, she's very much about educating the community as well about issues surrounding conservation. So I think it's, you know, a skill set that the town could certainly utilize, you know, in whatever situation arises.
She had a lot of influence, yes.
He graduated my daughter, he was one of my daughters and I can attest to the passion that she has.
And I can tell everybody on Khan Khan really, really is excited about having this person join, so.
What we've been, we're searching for, for over a year.
Yeah.
It's a long time.
Time that works out right.
Right, right, so I'd be looking for a motion to, as written.
I move to appoint Isabella Genova to the part-time position of conservation agent, twenty-seven dollars per hour, up to eighteen hours per week, pending successful completion of a background check.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Number five, consider Mark Pacino Senior Center Expansion Study Committee. Again, Mark is, Mark is unable to attend. Mark was, was a police officer here amended for a time and, and went out to Arizona, came back and then was on the fire department. Now he is the, you know, Assistant Emergency Management Deputy Director. He most recently just applied for a grant, you may have seen through some emails that came through. The state was, was providing money for A E Ds and police and fire working and Mark is heading it up. He just sent me an email Sunday morning to, to sign a document and let the fire run to me to get it done quickly. He's very effective, he's a good friend and, you know, he, he called to tell me he couldn't attend and I said, you know, don't worry about it. But I think he'd be an excellent addition, so I'll be looking for, for a motion to appoint Mark Pacino to the Senior Center Expansion Study Committee. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much. Now, number six, I know this has been a long time issue, we've been talking about, specifically Pa's Bed and Biscuit brought up an issue that we, we don't have any official town policies or procedures for kennels, there is, there are state laws that govern it, so I guess I would ask, if Mr. Anton Ellis and your party comes up to the, comes up to the table as well as our animal control officer and, y'all could come on up and we can discuss this. So just, I'm gonna start off by, by just reading a, a document that was produced to, to the board by Town Council Caris North, who by the way, Attorney North isn't here at this evening because she's actually receiving an award for her service. So we'll, we'll talk more about that later, but this, this is dated, was dated October thirtieth. It said, you asked that I review the report of the regional animal control officer concerning Pa's Bed and Biscuit and its application to increase the number of animals that may handle its facility. I reviewed the A C O's report and found that his report and conclusions are reasonable and well-supported. The A C O found that based on the numbers, he'd recommend the select board authorize a kennel capacity increase from the current seventy-five dogs to a hundred and eight dogs. He'd be willing to authorize a hundred and eight dogs, well as regulations are set with a kennel capacity increase. If the board of selectmen are not willing to set regulations, I'd be comfortable with the kennel capacity increase from seventy-five to eighty-three, which would be offer, which would be the authorized kennel capacity based on my inspection. The select board may choose whichever approach it wishes, if it chooses to adopt kennel regulations, those regulations would be forward-looking and not apply retroactively. With respect to the suggestion that the board adopt kennel regulations, I also concur. While the mend in town bylaws include animal control provisions, they do not set standards for kenneling and kennel limits. Draft proposed regulations are attached to the memo. Should the select board wish to implement these regulations, it must publish the draft and hold a public hearing to discuss the proposed regulations. Only after a public hearing and comment may the regulation be adopted and enforced. Enforcement only prospectively, prospectively, they may not be adopted retroactively. So I, I had a conversation with Town Council today and my understanding was that we could, we could vote as a board to allow, at the same time, the, the, the number of dogs to increase to a hundred and eight and to begin the process of adopting the regulations as suggested. And the next step would be to advertise to have a public hearing and go through that process and ultimately adopt regulations. So with that being said, I just, I'd ask the A C O first, or animal control officer, if you wanted, if you want to have some comment about what we just talked about here.
Yes, if I could. Sure. So in the inspection of Pa's Bed and Biscuit, honestly, what Dan's done up there, it's impressive. He's, you know, had a great establishment up there, it's a great business in town. We really want, you know, support Dan, you know, all of his strives to move forward. He's done a lot of great things, his indoor arena is amazing, his kennels are nice. He really does do a fantastic job, so I don't want anyone to think he doesn't. My concern is always the number of dogs and the size space that each dog has. With that being said, under mass general law, if I would prefer to be able to sign off on the hundred and eight dogs, but under master and law, with us signing off on the hundred and eight dogs, it would be something to where they would have to, the board has the right to set, although we can overall set town regulations, the board has the right to set kennel regulations for a specific kennel based on his request for an increase. So we can go from the current seventy-five to the hundred and eight with the board accepting and setting the current kennel regulations. If the board doesn't want to do that, what we could do is we can go from the current seventy-five over to eighty-three, leave the numbers at eighty-three until we adopt new regulations and then once we adopt new regulations, then increase his numbers to a hundred and eight, or if he continues to make changes, you know, increase based on his changes. I, again, I think Dan's doing a great job, I think his kennel's impressive, I just want to make sure that everyone's comfortable with numbers and dogs kept safe.
Dan, do you or council want to?
Just briefly.
You just introduce yourself.
Oh, John Osniak, also a local town business, if anybody has never seen my sign before, it's across the street. But I'm, I'm counsel to Mr. Anton Ellis. I've only had a very brief time to look and I spoke to Smalley, I only had a brief time to, to review the regulatory regulations and we've also retained the services of an individual who's nationally renowned with respect to dealing with dogs and kennels and the like. So as I understand it, these regulations, although you just went and spoke in great lengths about how well Mr. Anton Ellis's kennel is being operated and if you go there, it is second to none in the local area and I'm not just saying that against client, there is no other kennel that does what he does, bubble, bubble baths for the dogs, the playing in the summer, pools, slides, toys, huge yard, big indoor play area and the like. These regulations will bring financial hardship to my client. He is asking, and part of those regulations, just as one example, and as I said, I've only had a brief glimpse at this. He's required, requiring one person per eight dogs and when it goes to nine, he's requiring two. Financially, if you do the numbers, what it would cost to hire two people for nine dogs, it's eighteen dollars an hour, some assuming based upon the market right now. And the costs of, of boarding dogs at this point in time, that will result in a negative, negative loss for the nine dogs. So that's just one thing, and I'd note, there's no other regulation in this state, nor have I been able to find one in a short time. I've had these in the nation that requires two people for nine dogs, not in the nation, the country. These regulations are written off of some type of idea. I mean, can you imagine having your, the kids in the school don't even get one teacher per eight kids or two teachers per nine kids? But we're gonna give them to dogs, it's not that I'm saying that dogs don't deserve the attention, but the, the individuals that my client has operating and working in the facility at this point in time are significant. I think the closest you come to eight is there's one town that requires two for ten, but after that, I mean, all the other towns don't have it. But one of the things that really jumped out at me is, what is the reason for the regulatory, the, the need for amended to adopt the regulations? What, what's the problem? What, why are we fixing something that's not broke? In this particular instance, you know, and I understand that there's, but there is state regulations governing kennels, there are state regulations governing capacity, there are state regulations governing how a dog or animals are treated during the course of time while they're, while they're in a boarding situation. But I also know, and there's, there's spacing requirements for certain sized dogs. Certain dogs get certain size and, you know, miniatures, tiny, poodles, mediums, large. I'm not, I, I have four dogs, I just don't have the, the knowledge of my client, he can speak directly to it. But I also know, in the kennel out of Massachusetts, wall-free or cage-free kennels are also allowed. There's, there's a couple of them that I, I, and my client was able to quickly notate, you could knock down all the walls and not have any requirement for cage kennels and you'd still be able to operate it. So what I'd ask the board to consider is this, my client didn't ask for a hundred and eight, my client asked for a hundred. He made that request prior to the time that we were talking about regulatory authority and there was no regulations in place. We'd asked this board to consider going at a hundred and if there's a need for regulations to come down at a certain point in time, we deal with that in the ordinary course, in other words, publication, that we have public feedback and the like. These regulations will have a negative detrimental, negative financial impact upon my client's ability to do business. I, it, it, he'd have to hire more people, he wouldn't have enough space, it's not the way the operation of the kennel would, would work. It's not, this is a commercial kennel, the dogs, is this board been inundated with complaints concerning the services that my client's been provided? I don't think so, at least I'm not aware of it. Perhaps there's somebody has secretly given anonymous letters and whatnot, but I, I'm unaware of that. In this particular instance, there's no rush to get regulations in place simply because there's a need, if there is a need and if there, the need is there, I don't believe that the regulations proposed by Mr. Sullivan in this particular instance meet that need, this, these regulations will thwart the growth of a business, will thwart the use of the kennel in the local area. If my client, if he's required to abide by these regulations and these are not retroactive, but what he's saying is, well, we'll give you a hundred and eight, we're only gonna give you a hundred and eight if, if in fact you abide by the new regulatory regulations that I'm proposing. And in fact, what they'll do is they'll require him to drive the prices up and competitors outside the mend in area who don't have these regulations, well, they'll swarm to those particular areas, there'll be some loyalty of course, because of the quality kennel and whatnot. But at a certain point in time, money's tight, people are gonna go to elsewhere where they can get a more reasonable price. So you're gonna impact it in, in a couple of different perspectives from that, that way. We also have an individual who's far more well-versed than I, I'm just a lawyer, okay? This guy is, is very well-versed with regard to regulatory authorities, to the associations governing or that deal with animals and dogs in particular, commercial kennels specifically, and he could speak to that, his name is Phil. Dan's also, obviously.
His name is Phil?
Phil, and I, I can't remember his last name, I have it, Paris. Paris.
Paris. Phil Paris, is he on, he's on? It's the Paris, are you, you have your speakers on and your microphone, can you, can you address the board?
Phil, can you hear us? You mind, I'm sorry, this chair, I didn't go right in.
All right, well, not, not to interrupt you, but I'd like to ask, ask the animal control officers, just comment on the suggestion to, to increase, just increase from seventy-five to a hundred with the current conditions that you've seen there.
So.
What would be the problem with that?
But, I mean, the, the current condition that we see there, again, he has a great setup, the problem is, when we previously went in there, we had overcrowding, that was the basic short of it, there was overcrowding, there was overcrowding inside the kennels, there was overcrowding with person to dog ratio, I mean, he had a dog run with forty-plus dogs outside and he had one person in the run. I mean, if there's a dog fight, you, it's, you, one person can break it up, you can't separate that, it's, it's not, just not safe.
Let me ask a question, how, Mr. Anton Ellis, if I, in, direct, I have a question. How many employees do you have on site during the day? Four to six, so you have four to six employees on site working.
Four to eight.
So, four to eight, so when, when the animal control office says that there's one, one for, was it forty dogs?
Well, yeah, he had two play yards, he had one employee in each play yard, he had one employee that was out on lunch and, and then he had one employee in the grooming room when I was there, so he had four employees there, but in general.
Two with the dogs.
Two with the dogs and, and at the time, there was ninety-seven dogs, ninety-seven dogs to two people. It's, I'm sorry, it's not safe.
If I could, if I could just comment on that, I believe that.
Two, you said two people and ninety-seven.
And, and, and so there was ninety-seven dogs between two pens and there was two people.
I, I think that the, I think you have to, I'm sorry, Mr. Goddard.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out, the reason why, to the point on why regulations is because I just heard ninety-seven dogs, which was overcapacity based on what the permit, the license allowed originally. So that is really the genesis of why we want to set up regulations to your earlier comment, just want to throw that out there.
And.
Well, in, in response to Mr. Goddard, although if there's ninety-seven dogs and the, and the, and the permit is for seventy-five, you already got the regulations that bring that enforceability of the seventy-five into play.
But in our last meeting, it was very unclear as to what were the rules of the road, so he said we need to establish rules of the road, which is what we're doing. So I'm in, I am in favor of establishing such principles and protocols, but I am kind of curious. All the, the verbal I'm hearing from each side of the fence doesn't mean a lot to me, so I would really request that if there, what is these, what is the information you use, what's the reasoning?
So the, the numbers I am using, I, I took from the International Dog Boarding Association.
Can you put that like in writing, I would like to understand sort of the foundation of your argument?
Yep, so.
And the foundation of your argument, although it's.
So I reached out to the International Dog Boarding Association for their numbers and then beyond reaching out to the International Dog Boarding Association, I reached out to the state of Massachusetts and I took their numbers on their suggestion based on Ollie's Law, although Ollie's Law did not pass, it did not pass, I did look at their numbers based through Ollie's Law. So I took the numbers from Ollie's Law and I took the numbers from the International Dog Boarding Association. Again, the number, the, the numbers I suggested, are they the stricter numbers based on dog to person ratio? Yes, do we have some conjecture in there for some adjustments? I'm open to it, but one person or two people, the ninety-seven dogs is where my concern is, that's, I mean, that's what I'm here for. So what I'm saying is, if, if he's not comfortable with one to eight, is he comfortable with one to ten, two to twenty, you know, three to thirty?
My question, because I, I think, and, and I, I don't know if any of the members of the board have been there, but I have been to Pa's Bed and Biscuit and I will say that, that, you know, we use their services and what was done earlier this year when I went up there is, is quite impressive. I was like, I was quite embarrassed of the conditions that my dog lives in my house, I saw what it's at there.
If I could, I think.
No, I'd ask you, please, just, so, so what I would, what I would ask you, which is the key question, I think, the, the request was to go from seventy-five to a hundred. So my question is, when it comes to staffing, how many attendants, humans would you, would you think is appropriate? If you had a hundred dogs, how many would you have, would you think would need to be with the dogs?
So the whole, so I want to mention, he has the availability to rotate dogs. So if he was gonna not keep all dogs out at all times, realistically, he could rotate dogs, which is what a lot of kennels do. And I'm not sure what his business practice is, so he does have the option to technically put twenty-five of those dogs away. So, and, and this is what I think a lot of places.
Additional manpower.
Well, but, but more or less, if you, if you rotated dogs in to rotate dogs out.
So, so my question.
So, so I'm gonna say if you had a hundred dogs, I mean, again, think about what a hundred dogs is. If you said one person to every ten dogs, or if we, even if we wanted, I mean.
Which would be, which would be ten people.
Ten people.
But my, so you're suggesting that they need to have ten people with, with the hundred dogs?
Well, the whole.
The pen, or could you?
So if you think about the, well, this is what I'm saying, if you think about the size of his pens, he now needs to move dogs, they all stay in one pen because you can't fit a hundred dogs in one pen, so now you're talking.
Well, the pen eyes.
Thirty dogs in one.
The pen I saw is, is pretty big, so my, again, the question, specifically the question, if there were a hundred dogs there, how many humans would you, do you think you would need, based on your, based on these regulations, to function within, within those hundred dogs?
Can I rephrase that question?
Just.
Sure. How many people do you need when you have in a pen? You, you know, so I think your rotation question, so you don't have a hundred out there, what if you had? If you had forty, if, let's say you had forty dogs in one pen, I'd put three people in there minimum. Three people minimum in there, because if you had an incident with forty dogs, in that you have a fight, you're gonna have a catastrophe.
That's why they're, they're screened all in advance and it's standard practice, if we can get Phil on the phone, for it to be fifteen to twenty per person.
Fifteen to twenty per person.
Per person.
So you're saying.
Standard in the field.
What you're saying.
You can ask Phil.
Well, I, I guess.
It's part of this organization that he's referring to. Let me ask you, and again, is that with, is that with, how many, how many dogs within a pen? How many dogs within that pen? I mean, because to me, whether you have fifty or a hundred, you know, I think you would need more than three if you had a hundred in one.
I typically have four people, four or five people.
Four to five people.
Especially with the, how's the size.
Four to five people in, in with the dog.
Yes. Including him, so four people.
Yeah, because he's running the place, I understand.
Runs the place.
So you're suggesting that for, or would you agree that if he had a hundred dogs?
It's also not one pen.
Within, within a hundred dogs and two pens, so fifty dogs in a pen?
Over twelve thousand square.
How many, how many humans would he need within those two pens?
So I think the best way to put it was, I would say, if we want to stretch the limits, I'd say no less than fifteen dogs per one person.
Okay, so.
And again, I'm, I'm stretching the limits, I'm, you know.
That's, that's, that's your max.
That, that's what.
Twenty is the number I just heard out of.
Yes, and he's saying fifteen to twenty, so I, I'm comfortable with fifteen. And again, I'm, I'm just, I mean, again, if, if you think about fifteen large dogs and now even forty-five large dogs running through and you have two get into a fight, it literally turns into a catastrophe fast. And I understand he does screening, I understand he does everything he can, but again, I am not waiting for the, a disaster. I'm not, I'm, I'm asking the board, let's not wait for a disaster, let's not wait for a problem. If, if we are trying to keep dogs safe and, and, you know, not have an issue where, because I mean, truthfully, you have forty-five dogs in a, in a pen and God forbid you have one person get in there and dogs get into a fight and God forbid someone puts themselves in the way, you could have a person get killed.
So you make sure you don't have those kind of dogs, that's why we screen them.
In best case.
What I do, I'm a certified, I'm a certified dog trainer, I've been doing this for thirty years.
Reaching for fifteen years.
Been fifteen years here, but I'm doing this for thirty, sorry.
Just, I mean, what I hear is you have, I hear, I hear some movement here to say fifteen, I heard fifteen, so I mean, we should be working towards an agreement, I think, that's in the best interest of all parties, right?
Can I ask you to mute your phone because it's being retarded twice?
I apologize, he's.
So.
I'm gonna hang up unless.
So you could just mute the speaker and you'll be able to hear.
Yeah, so, so there's that, and then the only other thing I asked for, my big thing on the regulations, again, for safety, is I'm asking for one dog per kennel, like if he, if he has boarding dogs, unless you have a small dog, like again, and I'm, I'm open to working with that. If you have two Shih Tzu's or two Beagles or two Pappyons in, in a five-by-five pen, that makes sense. I wouldn't put my two Labs in a five-by-five pen.
But aren't there, but aren't there some that, that have open-air kennels that don't have any pens, it's just.
And, and, so I've never seen one, I've never been to one.
Yeah, I can speak.
This is.
Yeah.
What's your name?
I'm Steve Dyer, veteran. Other situations where it's actually advantageous for dogs from the same household to be kept in the same kennel, it's less stress. So the things that I get called to situations that thankfully not bring up stress-related diarrhea, colitis, that can actually be mitigated by dogs from the same household eating. Have the flexibility to handle different situations.
That's in the procedures in the same household, isn't it?
Uh, well, yeah, so, so my big thing is dogs have to be from the same household and.
Big dogs, it says.
And well, well, my whole thing is, in, in a lot of kennels, and I don't know if, I don't know if yours do, Dan, but like, they can remove a dividing wall between two kennels. I just want, again, I, I don't want to have an issue where we get, have two dogs in a fight, I don't want to create a problem and, and more or less, what I'm saying is if you have two large dogs, I mean, his kennels are five-by-five, the same at the municipal shelter.
With their five-by-fifteen outdoor runs too.
Which, so the outdoor runs are essentially for potty use, okay, same, similar to what we do, but inside is a five-by-five. On our inspection, we had gone through and, I mean, some of the kennels, he had anywhere from two to five dogs. I wasn't comfortable with it, it was, it was, it was overcrowding.
I've been to dog, you know, dog orphans in Douglas.
Yep.
And have seen.
So dog orphans in.
Five, five dogs in a, in a kennel space too, for a short, for, for shorter periods of time.
So that might, I don't know if that's like their outside play runs because they're inside kennels in the basement.
Yeah.
Um.
You've been in there, right?
Oh, I inspect, that's one of my towns, but so it's never been like that when I've been there, because it's not allowed. Their kennel capacity doesn't even allow that many dogs, so I don't believe they can.
Have you cited him in the past?
So, so I, I, on our last inspection, I, I don't want to cite him because truthfully, under master and law, if I go in there and I find a complaint, what master and law says is I have to issue him a cease and desist. So immediately, if I go there and find a complaint, the only thing the law allows me to do is issue him a cease and desist, find him un, under master and law, and then bring it to your attention and have regulations set so that we can mitigate the problems I see. I told Dan then, and I mean it today, I don't want to do that, I'm not looking to negatively affect his business, I don't want to hurt anyone. I literally said to Dan then, I'm saying it now, I want to work with him, I want to see him thrive. Dan, I, I like you as a person, I like his kennel, like I do, I think he does a terrific job and, and. And, and, you know, and he explained to me at his house, his, the financial burden of everything on him. And the, the fact that he need, you know, the, what he needs out of this business, and I understand that, I do. But at the end of the day, the town, I'm not here for, yeah, yeah, I told Dan this, I'm not here to make sure he, you know.
Five by five space that live together all the time is. That's how, you know.
Well, we're not, but that, so.
We're talking about.
Yeah, so and, and again, in.
Two dogs, two labs that live together, boarding together. In their five, five by five is huge compared to the kennels that they're in at home at night. Cause I can fit three kennels and three, if I, if I put, cause we don't do cages, we call them suites. We could put three crates in there with three dogs, so that's more, I mean, they have more space.
I'd say a five by five crate, you, you couldn't fit two forty two inch crates. But no, no, what I mean is like, you know, in a, in his five by five kennel, it would be very difficult to fit in two forty two inch crates next to each other. In order to fit them.
At your standard, so two dogs, two labs, two Goldens from the same household.
So.
Could be able to board together in a five by five with a five by fifteen. And everybody screamed, they don't fight at home, they're.
Well, I also wanna mention, the other thing is that one of the other requirements is that we give raised beds, so I mean, dogs get lost. And they do, and, and I've always committed him on that. The problem is that you now have a raised bed that's, you know, essentially a twenty three by forty two inch bed.
They make.
You have.
Beds, as a matter of fact, Coranda makes them so they can sleep on top of each other. Um, and again, we're talking about, there's a lot of cage free kennels. I could tear down the walls and they could all sleep together. So the size requirement just doesn't make, it's not necessary, especially when I've never had a problem.
Kevin, would you, would you? Agree that having two large dogs in a five by five kennel from the same household is acceptable? But, well, I, again, I. Well, it's, there's not a yes or no answer.
Sure, sure there is, cause I'm, I'm asking you, if two large dogs come from the same household. That are, that are being boarded there for a few days or a week. And the plan was to board those two dogs from the same household in a five by five kennel, do you believe that that's acceptable or not?
So without an explanation, I would say no. With, wi- without an explanation, I would say no. Wi- and, and again, and again, I can.
Well, explain to me why it's not acceptable.
So essentially, again, I'm, I'm thinking raised bed here, so if, if a dog is locked inside and has an accident, okay, you can't fit two large labs. On a forty two inch dog bed.
Yes, I can fit two beds in there, I do it all the time, and when I do, they actually sleep together on one. They'll crawl, they'll have those full sized beds, the raised beds that everybody's seen, I'll have two labs and instead of them sleeping on separate beds. They sleep together on one of them and the other bed's empty. I've been doing this for thirty years and I've been here for fifteen with no problems. I mean, you're, don't get me wrong, I, I, I apologize for sounding, but there's just no reason for this. All I did was say, okay, I want to, and that particular day was a day we had to brush everybody in because of. We're, you know.
Heat, heat warning.
The heat warning, which now we have the arena, but we had to rush everybody in the next day because we had all, and there weren't ninety six dogs in the playground. There were ninety six dogs in the property, I don't even know if it was exactly that high, but we have.
How many did you have a license for?
Seventy five.
I mean, you keep ignoring that point.
Yes, and I, and I apologize, it was a turnover day, cause we have holidays and things like that, so dogs going home and dogs coming in.
So the idea of regulations is to deal with sometimes the worst case scenario. So I keep hearing, it's never happened, it's never happened, this is intended to make sure you mitigate any risk of it ever happening. Thank God it's never happened, right? And I commend you, I've used your services myself, but this is, you know, to take a step back. I mean, I wanna get back to the fact that, you know, same family.
So dogs from the same house.
On a mission, I, I personally have two labs, okay, I own two labs myself. My, I love my dogs, my dogs are together at home, they're great, but you now take two dogs. And you put them in a stressful situation like a kennel, you don't know what's gonna happen, they're still animals. They're animals, at the end of the day, they are animals. So would I necessarily want my two dogs housed together? I don't know, I don't know, I'm my two, I have two little beal, be, I also own two Beagle York mixes, they're twenty pounds each. In a five by five kennel, could one of them get away from the other one to give them each other space? Sure, I think so. I think I could realistically house them together in a five by five pen, and if they wanna get away from each other, they could. But if you took my two hundred pound labs, uh, you, you, let's say they're twenty pounds lighter, eighty pound labs, and you put them into a five by five kennel. And one of them gets hair across their butt or upset with the other one, could they realistically move away from each other? No, they couldn't. Um, and then from there, you put two dogs in a pen, you now have double the feces, double the urine. Um, two more water bowls. All I'm saying is, everything's now doubled, so, and, and so you're now taking it and you're squeezing these two. Now you're putting two beds into a five by five pen. Again, my kennel's in Blackstone, I've been running the municipal animal shelter in Blackstone for seventeen years. Come into the shelter in Blackstone, my indoor pens are set five by five. I, we, we put in, if I put in two dog cots side by side, there's no floor.
You ever put two dogs in one five by five kennel?
No. Well, again, hold on, I don't wanna say no. It, it, in the situation where we have had been over capacity, cause we have typical municipal shelter, if I had picked up two dogs running free. And we bring them into the shelter, I will immediately offload them because it's often, it's in the summer when we're over capacity, and I offload them into a kennel together.
That's, that's different because that's an exigent circumstance.
It's an exigent circumstance and.
Like a, a kennel.
And I have never left them in there overnight, unoccupied together. We set up more crates, I unload the dog from the kennel into a crate, and then we do nighttime visits and we come in early.
It's a question.
Yes.
When I read these regulations, you do say cer- certain things where you say, uh, the housing in the same kennel without the owner's permission. Right?
Yes.
So, which is good, that's fine, but why wouldn't you extend the owner's permission to include my two labs? I know they're. You know, they'll be fine, put them in the same kennel, or four chihuahuas from the same household if the pet owners give you permission.
Yep, so, I'm just wondering, yeah, no, I mean, I guess my biggest concern there is because, um. Have you ever put your dogs in a stressful situation as a pet owner?
I can put them on the phone.
You know how your dog will react?
I might think I do, yeah, but.
No, but I mean, that, that's why, honestly, that's, that's the reason.
Can I, can I say something? You're talking about difference between picking up strays and putting them in the same kennel? And taking dogs from the same house is apples and oranges. You can't create your own emergency. That's my point. Mr. Goddard, your points are well taken with respect to the capacity, but the other thing with respect to capacity and boarding, and he's looking for an. Uh, increase in boarding, and some of the dogs are there for grooming, some of the dogs are there for training, they're not there for boarding.
I, my last question had to do with boarding specifically, so.
I understand that, but you know, you're talking about, you know, what we're talking about here is we're creating a situation where you're gonna create. Dogs that have never been near each other, that have been, are, are highly agitated because they've been either, either let go somewhere. And, you know, I have four dogs, okay, I'm not supposed to have four dogs, but I have four dogs. And, and one of them's a hundred twenty five pound yellow lab, and you know what? I also had chickens. That dog wouldn't walk by a chicken because he was afraid. You know something else? A, a chicken laid an egg in front of the door, he wouldn't like walk by the egg either, cause he's afraid of that as well. But I got a little tiny, um, little tiny dog that will take on that twenty, twenty five pound yellow lab. So it's a function of, as Mr. Antonella said, a matter of, uh, best, or, or in, you know, making sure that the dogs that he's bringing into his facility. Are safe and gonna be, uh, consistent with working together. He's not gonna put himself, understand from a business perspective.
Point though, that means these dogs must be screened each and every time they come in, because by the time they last came and were vetted. To the time they come the next time and they're vetted, nothing occurred that that dog's behavior may have changed. Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. If you ca- if you bring, well, dogs don't change, sir. With all due respect, if dog, if you believe that dogs change from day to day and you have to vet your dogs every single day. You've made the operation of a commercial kennel untenable and un, uh, just not.
That's not what I said, but I'll know.
Yeah, but, but counselor, counselor, I, I was a police officer for a long time, I responded to an awful lot of places. In both Mendon and Millville, where, and it's, it's almost, uh. It's almost a fable, or a fable that everyone would say, oh, don't worry, my dog won't hurt anybody. And then, and then two minutes later, you know, somebody stepping on him or they bit somebody. So you can have the most perfect dog and it can turn, so yes, they do change. And, and yes, they aren't the same all the time, and these numbers are, are in place for worst case.
And, and with all due respect to, to you, Mr. Chair, I understand your position, I was, I delivered mail. When I was in, even going through college, so I'm well aware.
That's what I'm saying.
Of the, exactly.
Right, so, so we're all on the same page, that it's, the dogs are unpredictable.
But what, but my, my point is this, in, in response to what Mr. Goddard said, if you're a responsible pet owner and you're bringing to my client's facility. And you know there's something going on with your dog, cause everybody understands their dogs, and if there's something going on, their dogs are gonna make them highly agitated. Or they're gonna have a problem or they're not feeling well, they have an obligation to inform my client of that, and that's part of the contract that they sign when they bring the dogs in.
The dog's difficult, they can't come back.
Yes, I, and I, I understand that, but also, I, there are also times, I'm certain. When maybe a dog owner doesn't inform the kennel, because they're headed to Hawaii and they can't have no place else to put the dog. So they don't, so they don't say so, and these, this is a safety net, that's what this is for, but to get back to the original point. The suggestion was to, to increase the capacity to a hundred dogs. And I believe the ACO agreed that if we had, uh, six people with the dogs. You would think that, that a hundred was a, a acceptable number if we had six humans with the dog.
What I'm gonna say is, I think what we'd be safe saying is one person to fifteen dogs. If we set numbers of one person to fifteen dogs, if we set numbers of no more than two dogs per kennel run. With dogs from the same household, we can meet, find a middle road. I'm willing to find a middle road. Um, like I said, the reason.
So let me just.
Yep.
So no more than two in a run, that's when they're boarded overnight?
Yes.
Two in a run when, when we're talking about the big guys, but when we're talking about the little guy.
What about the small dogs?
I, I mean.
That has four chihuahuas aboard, it's like every other week.
And I have.
What about, what about having small, four small dogs from the same household in the same kennels?
So.
Would you accept that?
Okay, what I'm gonna say there is, I am willing, I am very reasonable man. I am willing to say that I think it would depend on the situation.
Okay, but in order for us to make this work, we need to come up with some numbers that we put in here. Could owner's permission be one of those?
Right, with owner's permission.
If owner's permission, I think. Allow four, four small dogs in a.
Personally written the language. There is a consent form that they sign coming in.
Um, Dr. Dyer wants to say something.
I can see. I, I, I just wanna reiterate too, I mean, when I work every day, I have new dogs coming into a new environment, it's scary, I'm gonna poke them with a needle. Some of the owners bring another dog just for moral support, and I, uh, there's many unknowns here.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, and you're, unfortunately, your population is probably a lot less known about them because you're getting these strays on there too. And I'd be very cautious with strays in my, in my exam room. But when, the only thing we can know about the dogs, the only shot we have is what the owners have to say. If we.
Right.
If we say that the owners can't know, or we can't trust the information the owners provide, we have to set regulations. Regulations don't allow for any flexibility, so if the owner says my dog's gonna be less stressed if he brings it, all support. I tell them, bring it in, bring in that dog. I have scars, unpredictable things happen, there's nothing you can do to regulate away the possibility, unless you just.
So I could.
We all have.
But who wants to do that?
But, but, but that's not, that's not the rest of our lives. We want to go on vacation, we want to have places where we feel comfortable with our dogs. We wanna have a little bit of say as to how our dog can take care of. So I think we need to be very sort of flexible with that. Can work better sometimes, I let owners hold the dog while I'm doing it, even though I know. That I'm liable for their health, but people will go better flexibly.
So. What, what I'm, what I'm reading from this consensus is maximum of a hundred dogs, no more than one dog per kennel unless. The owners of the dogs grant permission, and then one human attendant for every fifteen to twenty dogs. Are those acceptable?
I would ask for every fifteen, not fifteen to twenty, every fifteen.
Yeah, it's max, it's min.
So.
Um, so the motion would be to increase the, uh, capacity to one hundred dogs. With the understanding that would be one, maximum of one dog per, for boarding kennels, unless the dog's owners grant permission. And there would be one, one human attendant per fifteen dogs, um, at all times, so.
Uh, and hold on, can I ask for one, can I ask for one more thing in there?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have one more thing to add to that. I would also ask, um, so in the arena area, um, Dan and I did went over this, um, last year when he did the arena. Um, we went over it again when we were speaking before, um, we had kinda set numbers based on the arena. Um, so numbers based on the arena is just square footage space to dog ratio. Um, so essentially in the large dog area, we had set a minimum of seventy five square feet per large dog. And a minimum of forty square feet per small dog. Um, I, I put those numbers in the report to Karice that she asked for, they're in the report there. So I would also like to just include in there, essentially, I don't wanna see a hundred dogs in the arena area. Um, on a day where we have bad weather or on a day when we have a heat advisory, I just wanna make sure we're worried about safety, so.
Guarantee that there is no, I won't do a hundred dog, no, a hundred dogs in the arena. But, um, if we do have bad weather, and in the bad weather days, we don't have that much daycare. Um, to restrict it as much as the numbers that you put on there is, is. It's gonna cut us down significantly.
Oh, well.
Even our regular head count.
So a, a hundred dogs?
About a hundred dogs in the arena.
No, no, so in the actual.
We're not, we're just talking about a hundred dogs on the premises.
Yes.
Not a hundred dogs in the arena.
Right, yeah.
Alright, so the motion is, motion been made and seconded for a hundred dogs, one dog per kennel unless the owner permits. You know, doubling or tripling up, whatever, whatever works, and then, uh, one human attendant per fifteen dogs on the premises.
So is this motion to expand the capacity right now, or is this a?
Yeah, but this is the, with the, the language in the procedure.
Well, there's, there's two issues. The first one is to expand the capacity. And I'm told we have the, we have the authority to do that, which is what, which is the motion that's on the floor. Now, in addition to that, a separate, a separate issue. Um, which we're gonna take in advisement now, is there is a draft, um, commercial kennel regulations. That the ACO, the Animal Control Office has proposed. In order for us to enact that, the next step. Is to advertise a public hearing and let people come in so that we can actually establish.
So.
Some regulations, so we're not doing that tonight, we're just establishing, but what we just talked about would be edits towards written. Yeah, well, yeah, so, so what we just talked about would be edit to the animal regulation, but if the board wants to extend his numbers. The board has the right under master general law to set regulations in extending his numbers, so.
However, that's not exactly correct. When I talked to counsel today.
Mm-hmm.
What she said is, in order for us to set those regulations, we have to have a hearing and it's a, a long process. She said, what we can do is what is under, is a motion that's under advisement right now, that's been, that's been made and seconded. But then, we, we, we can, but we don't have to follow up.
I add those.
I wanna rescind my motion, only because once these regulations go into place. They cannot be retroactive, meaning that whatever we agree to in terms of extending your number today.
Right.
It is what it is, and anything we edit on this regulation.
Well, we're not editing, the regulation's not in place, we don't have it.
I might suggest we wanna get our.
But.
Because this cannot be retroactive, before we start ex- expanding the kennel numbers, I would suggest we get this in place.
I agree.
Well, you're, you're only, could I, could I speak to that? Because you're only extending it by twenty five.
Well, only, and, and again, what I, what I, what she said about prospectively is that, you know, we can. We can put regulations in place and change the numbers again. We just can't do this to, to pass a regulation, retroactively find somebody.
Okay, alright.
That's, yeah, you follow what I mean?
So.
That's all.
Right.
So that's what that is, so right now, you, you still wanna rescind your.
Uh, no, but I actually wanna amend it because I think the third point that the gentleman was making actually has to do with. It's a requirement of extend, expanding to, to a hundred.
Yeah, so.
The number in the run, I would say.
The number in the run, the, the person to dog ratio. I think it's very important to talk to Phil because he's part of the organization that he's talking about, and Phil is the expert. Alright, where is, can we try again? Cause he said he just signed back in, and if.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Phil.
Okay, sorry, I had to rejoin.
Please.
Say again?
You introduce yourself, please, and.
Uh, sure, my name is Philip Paris and I am a consultant in the pet industry and I work. Uh, sure, my name is Philip Paris, and I am a consultant in the pet industry, and I work with facilities all over the country.
And what organization do you belong to?
International Boarding Pet Services Association, I've been a long-term member.
Have, have you reviewed this, this issue and the proposed regulations?
I have, I've, I've been working with Dan for a while, so I've been a little bit familiar with the proposed, uh, recommendations, and, and I think that when you look at our industry, there's a lot of different practices, and then a lot of people are doing a lot of different things. The IBPSA is the association that was referenced, they're, they're one of the largest organizations out there, and one of the only ones that have any sort of, uh, structure, I would say. Um, outside of them, there's another agency called the Dog Gurus, who have been one of the early pioneers in teaching body language and behavior and group management for the last twenty years. And neither of them recommend a one to eight ratio or a one to nine, it's generally one to fifteen. And, you know, depending, I've been to facilities where I've seen one to twenty, it just really depends on the quality of dogs. And, you know, my philosophy on that is, is that whatever is safe in that moment in that facility, because every facility is different, every, uh, everyone operates and takes different dogs, and it comes down to how strict you are with what you will accept. So knowing that Dan won't even accept any kind of a reactive dog or an aggressive dog, uh, puts him in a much favorable position to manage larger than a one to ten ratio, because he's just not accepting the dogs that would historically, you know, pose, pose a problem. The other thing that caught my attention was the recommended per square footage per dog in an area. And I think that when the Dog Gurus and the IBPSA put out, you know, what they would call best practices, where they reference that is typically in the planning phase when you're looking for a property, because that's a common question from people looking to start in this industry, is how big do I need, and so the purpose was to give them an idea based on, well, how many dogs do you need to break even and make money, this is the size facility you should look at. I don't know that they get into very specifics on exact rooms, because you could have a smaller room with twenty completely passive senior dogs and have zero problems, and they've got space. So, I, I disagree with, with that recommendation. I agree, dogs should not be crammed into very tight spaces, like, uh, Kevin, I apologize, I don't know your last name, or I would call you mister. Uh, but, but as ACO recommended, you know, dogs wanna create space when they're uncomfortable. And so that's what we look at, is where they're at, irregardless of the size, is can they create space if they are uncomfortable or they wanna be left alone, that's more of the, the guiding factor that we look for, is can that exist? Um, without a specific square footage dimension, because that gets subjective, and then it's, what defines a large dog, is it a weight limit, is it visual, it, it just gets into a big gray area that I think would be really hard to, for anyone to really, anyone in this room, to really figure out what square footage are you needed, because those dogs change day to day on size and attendance, so, you know, I, I'm not against having standards, I just think they have to make sense in the real world and real life application.
And, uh, you spoke to the president of the organization he's talking to.
That is correct.
Organization is that?
The IBPSA. And her name is Carmen Restabeck.
And, and what's, what is that stand acronym?
International Boarding Pet Services Association.
Is that the one that you're talking about?
Yes, so I, I spoke to Angie Morrison for the organization, and she was the one that actually gave me the numbers of seventy to a hundred square feet per dog, as low as fifty for small dogs and forty for toy dogs. And then, um, she actually put in there, uh, ratio of one person to no more than ten to fifteen dogs. And that was, that came directly from them and her, uh, and that was under their best practices, which is what we reached out to. So between using their numbers and the state numbers off of all the recommendations for Ollie's law, is how we came up with our numbers.
Okay, Jason, you have a comment?
I just wanna ask, Mr. Antnells, how many dogs do you wanna put in the arena space, what's your safe number?
Um, I would say I could, I say I could easily put seventy dogs in the whole arena.
So, the worst part, so if you actually look at the numbers, let me pull it up, the numbers I think I actually suggested.
Standing there going, this is my space, this, if you've ever seen your dogs, they're all running together. They'll be on one side, then they'll be on the other, okay? I could honestly forty-five square foot per dog, running in, around in, uh, an area as big or as wide as a football field, okay, the width of a football field is not the, you know, not the whole thing, um, just the length of a football.
Twenty-seven hundred square feet for your biggest arena.
So, we could, they easily, some of them take naps, some of them are running around, uh, easily seventy, if not more, especially if you got the little guys on one end in a, in, in the little guy yard, and not only that, but it's available for movable, flexible walls. I was just looking at them the other day, so I can adjust the size, and if I have four, you know, ten little guys, they can be in a different space than the other big guys on another day, it's.
So, we're in agreement on one to fifteen, right?
For, for person.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
The only, the only thing I've, the only thing I've heard this change is, in addition to the, the motion that's on there, is to also limit the maximum number of dogs in the arena at any one time to seven.
Seventy?
So he reflected.
Seventy, I don't, I, I wanna say eighty.
So.
But not a hundred, but not a hundred.
No, because I have a whole other building that, that we can use, which.
What's that?
We had to use that day in particular, because.
Times thirty.
So, I would just wanna.
And, oh, and the other thing is, some of them are leaving, so they're not involved in it, like, so especially during like the summer, when you have, when you're at, if you're at capacity, and twenty of them are leaving after their baths within the next two hours, then, or ten of them, we'll say, typical day, then how does that factor in? Cause they can, they're leaving anyway. Do the grooming salons even have kennel licenses? I don't think so, so I don't think grooming should apply. In Ollie's law, they were, Ollie's law doesn't pass, because it's, it's not passing the legislature, cause it's so excessive. Um, that's why they're, they're, even the, um, what is the IP, IPSA, the other one that's saying, okay, we're gonna try to help by putting this law out, that's going to make grooming and training completely separate in your boarding facility, so if I have five dogs there that I'm boarding, I mean, uh, training, they should be, shouldn't be counted as boarding or daycare, or ten dogs that are getting groomed, shouldn't be counted as boarding or daycare. It's, there's so many factors that, that the restrictions are just, it's honestly, after all this time, it's.
So right now, we, we really got three things, you got person to dog. I'll accept, we agree on.
I, I can't, I can agree to one to fifteen.
Permission, I think.
Anyway.
To.
Right, and by the way, we'll, we'll provide you a copy of that, just so you have it on file.
So, well, well, when we have a copy, everything's being recorded right now, so we have a copy of all of.
They give you a copy of the permission.
So, the third point is, has nothing to do with grooming or training, it's when they're in the play area, call it the play area.
Yeah.
When they're outside, what's the right number of people based on, what's your square footage right now for your?
For the playyards are, I think Mike said twelve thousand square feet.
So, not saying they're not big yards, and, and truthfully, my concern isn't necessarily in his playyards, cause playyards are fairly large, they're, they're quite nice, he has AstroTurf, it's, it's a great setup.
Seventy, eighty dogs.
No, 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 um, so, so the whole thing is, so he has a terrific outdoor area, and I'm gonna say, two-thirds of the year in New England, it works really well, it's the third of the year I'm worried about. So, when we have excessive heat.
Yeah.
Or we have too cold, um, his entire outdoor area is where his play area is. So up until la- last year when he did his arena, if you dropped off your Chihuahua there for daycare, your Chihuahua from the time it got dropped off to the time it got picked up was more or less outside.
You know, we had enclosed canopies, but you, uh, which is cool, what you wanted, um, a permanent building, so we did that, but we had heated canopies, tents that were enclosed, so the dogs could go in and out.
So.
They were heated, then they were.
Just wanna mention, um, the heated canopy was, it was a, it was a carport with sides, um, that was your.
It's a party tent, and they're using them for, um, for.
And at the time.
Graduations.
The employee was explaining to me that.
They're doing restaurants, right?
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, so.
Like enough, uh, enough.
Okay.
We're, we could, we could go on for hours, and I realize everybody is passionate about their animals.
And I took care of.
Trying to come up with some numbers.
So the numbers, I'm trying to say.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to stop you.
Okay.
Because we've been talking about this for six months.
Yes.
Right.
A year, actually, over a year.
Well, I've been talking about it for six months with you. I'm saying that the motion on the floor is a hundred dogs, one dog per kennel unless the owner gives permission to have more in that kennel, that will have one human attendant per fifteen dogs, and then addition, we don't wanna have a, a max of seventy-five in the arena.
Again.
The number he's getting to.
Uh, that's what I was trying to get to, so, uh, again, the, the square foot, based on his numbers, okay? I just wanna mention, he has a thirty by thirty small dog area and a thirty by ninety large dog area. If you took it, that area with the small dogs, and did minimum of forty square feet per dog in the small dog area, he can fit a total of, um, twenty-two small dogs. In the large dog area, which is thirty by ninety, if you did a s- minimum of seventy-five square feet per dog, then there is a total, then he can fit a total of thirty-six dogs, between those two areas, you, you could fit a total of fifty-eight dogs.
So you're suggesting that you have to have seventy-five square feet for one dog?
Yes, for play area, and that is what's recommended through the International Dog Training Association.
Can I, can I interject?
Yeah, sure, absolutely, please do.
I apologize, I understand the reasoning tha- that they will make suggestions on the square footage, but I can tell you that in all of my travels with facilities and even asking people, I don't know of any other state or municipality that has implemented a square footage law or requirement. It's, it's something that's recommended more in the planning phase than it is in an actual restrictive ordinance or law. Um, unless I'm missing something, and I've been around for a long time, I just, that's not something that has ever really been enacted officially. It's always just a best practice for planning, so that people aren't going and buying a little house, hoping they can do fifty daycare dogs in it.
So.
Like, there's an organization called AHA.
Sorry, um, I wanna mention, um, the town of Hope Dale, Milford, Bellingham, Medway, and Millis have now all adopted and regulations or kennel regulations with square foot requirements.
For the play yard?
Uh, just, well, just play, uh, there is a m- square footage for dogs i- in general.
Okay.
Um, and that.
That's not what we're talking about here, we're talking about seventy-five dogs in the play yard, and you're saying that there are other towns in this area that limit the size of the play yard to seventy-five square feet per?
Yes, uh, Milford, um, Hope Dale, um, Medway, Millis, uh, and then Bellingham.
Scared their only kennel out by doing it.
Uh, so Milford's, uh, has, has two kennels.
Now they got.
And, uh, and Milford's kennel actually moved to Hope Dale due to square footage, it didn't have to do with.
Right, cause they got.
Regulations, and, uh, and they left in Milford and went to Hope Dale without a kennel license, where they then got issued a cease and desist, um, because they were operating a commercial kennel without a kennel license, um, where we, we then had to.
Case here.
Which is not the case here, where we then had to go into agreements with them, the same, similar to what we're doing here, and set, you know, further regulations.
There's difference between what he did, I, I filed suit against the company he's talking about, quite frankly, and, and that's, that's how, it, it doesn't, it's not have anything to do with.
No, it's, it's very much different than what Dan's doing, I, I do wanna say, Dan, when I tell you that.
The kennel moved to Milford, to Hope Dale, was, was a party to a lawsuit by its neighbor, so it's, it's a much different scenario.
I didn't wanna get.
Yeah.
I understand, I'm so.
Absolutely, um, so we really made good progress on the first two points, like game to agreement?
Again, well.
Last point.
Well, I'm gonna negotiate here.
Well, it comes down to number of dogs, right, you have.
I'm comfortable at fifty-eight, he's looking for eighty.
He's looking for eighty.
Yep.
So, so let me do the math.
Seventy.
Um.
So, I mean, realistically, right, I mean, in best case scenario, nothing happens, because there is plenty of room for them to run around, and they have fifty square feet instead of seventeen, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's seventy.
Correct that you have two play yards, that correct you, Daniel, that you have two play yards.
I'm sorry.
You have two play yards, two outdoor play yards?
Two outdoor play yards, yes.
Okay, so.
Well, three.
Three.
Three, but so we can, so could we agree that you would have a, a maximum of eighty dogs spread out over all three at any time, so, because that acceptable to you?
So, so that's essentially what he does now, uh, which, again, I think is great, my, my concern.
Just.
So.
No, please, so what we're saying here is that you're in agreement that he can have eighty dogs outside, spread over the three play yards, as long as he has, uh, no more than fifteen dogs per human attendant, and he has no more than a hundred dogs on the property, and a max of one dog per kennel, unless the owner allows the doubling up of more than one in a particular kennel, is that all fair to say?
So, I, I.
Yes or no?
That's the question to.
Just, I want, yes or no?
It's not a yes or no answer.
Okay, I just, yes it is. Did, did you agree to a hundred dogs? More, more than a hundred dogs max on the property?
With regulations.
Right.
Again, you're asking for yes or no answers when there's not a yes or no answer.
Go ahead. You, you started going on a path saying, for nine months out of the year, I think.
So.
Would work when everybody's outside.
Yes.
Then there's, there's a time of year you're concerned about, because I think the confine gets smaller?
There, well, no, there's time of year when the weather gets poor, so, so my question for you is, if we have a day when we have a whole week where it's ten degrees, and I show up there and he has a hundred dogs, or even eighty-five dogs shoved into an area that I feel is comfortable for sixty-eight, and I, you know, let's say I feel it's unsafe, what the law says I have to do is issue him a cease and desist and come before the board and say, hey, I feel this is unsafe, this is why. Is that fair?
Where is that shelter that you're describing?
It's, it's up in the back of his, and he built this, um, like dome tent-like structure.
I- in some respects, there's, there's a question about the capacity of that dome.
That's my only concern with capacity.
How many dogs do you wanna put in the domed?
That's what he's asking for.
I'm gonna say eighty.
But eighty is the max for three outside play areas, I thought.
We, if we're doing, what is, uh?
So you're saying.
What is ten thousand or twelve thousand square feet, uh, and seventy-five square feet per, or forty-five?
Yeah.
So what you're saying, you got a hundred dogs on the site.
Yes.
You're saying eighty percent of those dogs can go into the domed area.
Yes, if the weather is bad.
And what's your number for that?
I believe it was.
That's not the normal price.
It was fifty-eight, so, so, so fifty-eight, I feel comfortable saying the dome can comfortably fit fifty-eight.
What if there's, what if there's an emergency, which is what we're talking about?
So, but the whole inclement weather is necessarily emergency, we live in New England, so what I'm saying is, if there was emergency, let's say one of his fences blew down, and he had to put the dogs in there because a fence blew down, that's an emergency to me. We live in New England, us having snow, rain, or, or, or cold.
Well, I guess what I'm getting.
Isn't an emergency.
If his plan is to have no more than a hundred dogs on the premises, and no more than eighty spread out among three pens.
But.
And if there's, there is an area, there is a time when there is inclement weather, whether it's a heat emergency or hail, or, or whatever it is, and he's gotta move those eighty into that one d- that domed area for a short period of time, say a couple of hours, you're not, that's not acceptable to you?
Well, that's what I'm saying, a- again, we live in New England, so us having a, a, you know, we're coming up right now, I mean, us having a week of twenty-degree weather, and he has Chihuahuas and Golden Doodles, I mean, you don't have double-coat dogs, he doesn't board all Huskies. So yes, when we come into New England, and, and you have a two-month span, I mean, let's say, again, I'm, I'm saying a third of the year, we have poor weather in New England, so you, you're gonna risk a third of the year.
I look at it this way, I hear sixty coming out of you in the dome facility, I hear eighty coming out of you in the dome facility, can you rotate? Seven, you have a hundred on total, you got seventy, I mean, can you work with seventy?
I'm gonna have to cut back, I mean, I, I have, I turn people away every day for daycare, cause they're popular. But I can, I have.
But these, these are firm numbers, you can't exceed a hundred. See, part of the, part of the rest of the question I have, is if you've got eighty of them, I'll spread among the three right, of the three areas.
Right.
And now you have a weather situation, and you put no more than fifty-five in that domed area. Do you have spaces for the rest of them, you know, in the kennels or indoor, so that you can actually have them and, with, without being overcrowded in that?
I had an emergency at that situation, I could bring them into the kennel, but we're talking about also daycare dogs that are being dropped off every day, which I can easily have, I could have just that number in daycare if I was, if I were allowed to grow.
What, what is the hundred, is it?
Hundred just for boarding?
That's for everything, that's daycare ambulances.
Captain a hundred.
Right.
I've, I've, I have a question.
Yeah.
So I have a question, so, when you're talking about the limits that you'd like to see.
Mm-hmm.
So your concerns are especially like, this is like, if there is like, particularly, like inclement weather, like, so, but are you expecting those limits to be year-round?
No, so, so I expect those limits to be when there's inclement weather. I, my, my whole thing is so. My comfort number is roughly, let's say sixty dogs in, in the dome area. He's asking for a comfort level of eighty dogs. I'd be willing to try to meet him partway and s- as, as long as there are no issues up there. So let's say we say seventy dogs in the dome area, okay? So we're roughly gonna say, you know what I mean, like. We say seventy dogs and I'm hoping we're not looking at four small dogs and, you know what I mean, sixty for large dogs. But I'm just saying, we, I'm willing to find a middle ground for him. Again, I'm giving our best case scenario numbers. We've been negotiating all night. Okay, I was asking for roughly sixty, he's asking for eighty, let's find a middle ground of seventy, okay? I'm not looking to hurt his business. Seventy.
Seventy.
So, so what I'm saying is if we said, so, and again, this is, oh, again, he has wonderful, huge, terrific play yards. Which are great, two-thirds of the time. What I'm saying is the third of the time when we have that heat advisor, when we have snow, when we have that crap weather. Don't put more than seventy dogs in your, in your, in your arena.
So we make that then, then limited to, um, heat advisories or Arctic snaps?
Um.
Can we make it, can we make the motion, reflect that? Those are the exceptions.
I think, I think the one, the one thing that's not negotiable here is there's never gonna be more than a hundred dogs.
Right.
On the premises at, at any time. As far as, and that's the one non, the thing that's not negotiable. The second one is there's always going to be. A ratio of one human to every fifteen dogs on the premises. And then. And then we're never gonna have more than one dog. Per kennel unless the owners of the dogs allow the, the doubling or tripling up, right, whatever.
Not necessarily just two, it could be four.
Could be, right. Start the agreement of the owners.
Well, I would just, we can't fit four labs in a five-by-five. I, I mean, I wanna, wanna, you know what I mean?
If, if I have.
I know, there is.
If I have owners of dogs who know their pets and they bring two labs. And they want those two labs together in a kennel, I, I don't feel comfortable making a policy that says they can't.
A lot of upset local people.
Right. So we're gonna, we're going to allow pet owners to decide the conditions. In the kennel for the owners. Period. And if the owner has four, four dogs and they want to put the four dogs in the kennel, cuz that's what they do at home. And they want it where they're here, I, I, I don't, I don't see a problem.
And you guys are gonna protect yourselves by reporting that, correct?
Right, yes.
Gonna fill that out on a document.
And then so the last thing is that we're, we're never gonna have more than seventy dogs in a particular play area at a time.
Or, yeah, in the arena, just in the arena.
More than seventy. Is that, that's, is that the motion you want to make?
That's so moved.
All those in favor?
I.
I. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Kevin Sullivan, thank you and your assistant very much for all your work on this.
So thank you very much. Have a good evening.
CMR PC Housing Production Plan.
Think, Lane, you, you had brought it forward, you're somebody here to discuss it.
Yeah, so Emily, this is Emily Globits. I'm sorry, I don't know if I said your last name right. Globits, Globits, okay. Um, from CMR PC, uh, and she has some slides to share. I don't, did, did you?
I pulled it up so I could share it online.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so I'm just here to talk about the housing production plan that, um, we'll be working on with the town.
Can you tell us exactly, just for everybody who's watching, what is a housing production plan?
It's what this whole presentation's gonna be about. Um, great, I'll just tell you, I guess I'm gonna switch the slides. Um, so yeah, I'm, um, a principal planner at the, uh, Regional Planning Agency, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Um, we also worked on Mendon's, um, master plan, which congratulations, just finished and approved and everything. Um, that's super exciting. So, um, yeah, it'll take about like ten minutes or so just to go through some of these slides. And then if you have any questions on anything I'm talking about or the process, um, we can have a little discussion. So, um. A housing production plan is a five-year plan, um, that is a way for towns to better understand their local housing needs and demand. Um, what kind of constraints and development constraints and opportunities exist and just create an overall vision. Um, for a future affordable housing, but also more diverse housing options for, for a community. Um, so Mendon actually has one that's in place right now, but it's gonna expire next year. So we're just getting. Um, on top of it to make sure when that plan expires, we have one ready to go for the next five years. Um, so basically, there's three components of the plan. We've got the comprehensive housing needs assessment. Um, which is all the data that we'll be collecting and analyzing. Uh, the population and, and housing stock characteristics, um, the markets like, um, any like. Population projections we can get. Um, and then the second part is the affordable housing goals, um. Uh, which will probably just be updating the existing ones, um, and just adding some, uh, more ones that are more relevant. Um, as well as the implementation strategies. Um, so the really specific strategies that, um. The town can work on, um, each year to accomplish those goals. Uh, excellent. Um, so just a brief overview, um, of what, uh, this kind of plan can provide guidance on. Um, it'll help people understand who is currently living here, um, who will be living here in the future. Um, what is the current housing stock look like? Um, are residents struggling with affording to live here? Um, a big part of this is gonna be public outreach, so that's something we're really gonna try to get into. Um, as part of the public outreach, uh, kinda components. Um, cuz it's not always just so, uh, easy to break it down by, oh, what's your income and. It's, there, there's a lot of elements going into affordability. Um, does the exist, yeah, does the existing housing supply match the needs of. Um, those are who, who are most vulnerable li- um, living in town. Um, and is there a range of housing options, um, not just single-family ownership, but is there. Um, options for housing that meets the needs of, um, single parents or, um, seniors living on a fixed income? Um, ideally, there'd be enough for people, um, to maybe wanna downsize to be able to stay in their community. Uh, and not have to move outside of town or even outside of the state. Um, and what sites in town, um, have the capacity for new housing? Um, and what does the infrastructure look like to accommodate, um, the, the current population and also any anticipated growth that comes with new housing? Yeah, go to the next slide. Um, so I, I think I kinda covered this, but, um, there's a bunch of ways that this kind of plan will help the town. Um, along with addressing unmet housing needs and demand, um, establishing a vision. Um, I'll get into this in a little bit, but, um, helping the town meet the state's ten percent affordable housing goal. Um, so I'll define kinda what affordable housing, when we're talking about that, what that means. Um, help managing, um, fortyB developments that come in under comprehensive permitting. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. Um, thing this plan is going to address, um, and it can kinda help, uh, mitigate that. Um, yeah, and then influence the, the types of housing that are coming in and also helps with, um. Grants and funding opportunities, especially from the state. Um, they'll, you kinda have a bit better chance of, of getting those, um. Those grants, uh, uh, if you have a housing production plan in place. Um, so this plan, like I said, is building on the, uh, it's an update to the twenty nineteen housing production plan. Um, I encourage everyone to take a look at it. I added a link there if you haven't already. Um, I listed some of the goals there. Um, so, and actually, if you go to the next slide too, this, um, will also be working off. Uh, building off the work that was done as part of the master plan that was just completed. I know there was a survey that went out and it had some. Questions, um, related to housing and kinda other things that are also tangential to, to housing. Um, and then there was also, as part of the master plan process, there was a design guides, guidelines handbook, um. That was prepared, um, to help inform the development of multifamily housing. Um, so really, this is, um, just building on the work that's already been done. We're not starting from scratch. We wanna. Use what's, what information we've gotten from the public, um, and data we've collected and, and just move forward from there. Um, another exciting thing is that, um, CMR PC recently hired a regional housing coordinator. Um, so she started a few months ago and Mendon is one of the towns, um, that's participating in this kinda new, uh, initiative. Um, so we do have someone on staff who's available at five, ten hours a week, something like that. Um, to help, um, the town with any, anything related to affordable housing and housing initiatives, um, which is really exciting thing. Um, yeah, the next side. Um, so just to give you a quick overview of kinda what the timeline's looking like, we have a working group that's been meeting a couple times. Um, to help move this process forward. Again, a big part of this is, um, public outreach. Um, so that's why I really need to kind of representatives from the town to, to help me. You know, uh, reserve spaces and promote, uh, any workshops we're gonna do. Um, so, yeah, we've kicked off the committee, um. The next steps, um, probably like now through, we're thinking February, something like that. Um, is to host, um, community forums. So that's something I'd be looking forward, uh, for input today. Um, if there's anything in particular you'd wanna focus on at these forums. Um, I typically have a presentation very similar to this and then we have some breakout activities where we really wanna get input on. What types of housing people would seal, uh, feel comfortable seeing built in the future, um, what they think is needed. You know, if there's a great demand for senior housing or small-scale apartments, something like that. Um, and where in town would be most appropriate for future housing. So it's, it's a really fun activity. But if there's anything kinda more specific that, um. I meant maybe like some like accessory dwelling units, if that's something that's come up as an issue and we wanna work on changing the bylaw for that, I, I don't know. Um, but there is really specific things we could focus on as part of this community outreach. Um, we had talked about doing like a public survey, but we felt we got a good amount of input from the master plan survey. This, the questions were pretty similar to what I would ask in a survey and honestly, I feel like people can be a little surveyed out, like. Um, so I think our, our goal is to focus just on hosting community workshops. Um, but if you feel otherwise, you know, open to that, but that's kinda what the working group's been, been thinking. Um, so basically, after we've wrapped up the, um, us, we're holding stakeholder interviews. So after all that outreach has been done, uh, be drafting the plan, um, taking all the good stuff from the, uh, twenty nineteen plan. Um, and then submitting it to the state. I'll be back here to present the final plan to the board and then to the planning board. Um, cuz both boards have to approve the plan before submitting it to the state. Um, and then unless they have any feedback, you've got a housing production plan for the next five years. Um, any questions so far? I'm gonna get into a little bit about what is affordable housing and comprehensive permitting, but I just wanna make sure. Good. Okay, cool. Um, so just when I'm talking about affordable housing, and this is for the people in this room and anyone listening at home, um. When we're saying affordable housing, it's not referring to the design type or method of construction of the housing. Units, but to the cost of housing to the consumer. Um, so a lot of com- communities have, you know, naturally occurring affordable housing, um, people can just generally afford to live. Um, in a, in a community without sacrificing a lot of their, um, income, um, just towards, towards, um, their housing costs. Um, but we're focusing on the state's definition of affordable housing. Um, which means that the unit, um, is deed restricted and it, um. Qualifies for inclusion on, um, what's called the subsidized housing inventory. Um, so, yeah, that's basically the state's list of all the deed restricted units, um, in Massachusetts. Um, and under Master New Laws fortyB, every town and city in Massachusetts must maintain at least ten percent. Of its housing stock, um, deed restricted as affordable to households earning eighty percent or less of the area median income. Um, so I'll get in, uh, if we go to the next slide. Actually, could we, um, skip to the next slide? I wanna get into what we mean by saying area median income. Um, so. Uh, basically, this is, uh, updated every year by HUD, um, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Um, it's, uh, they designate these areas, so this isn't just for Mendon, this is for that one hundred forty-seven thousand six hundred. That's for Mendon and about twenty or so surrounding communities. Um, so that's what we're working off when we say eighty percent of the AMI. And they have kinda formulas based on how many people are living in a household. Um, so HUD sets these income limits based on the number of people, um, so I've listed them out there. So for a single-person household. Um, in twenty twenty-three, to qualify, um, for. Living in an affordable unit, you can't earn more than sixty-six thousand three hundred, um, as just for one person. So if you think about that, that's, that's actually quite a bit higher than I think most people would have in their mind about who is living in a low-income apartment. I mean, this could be a, easily a teacher's salary or librarian. Uh, I was trying to look up some, some, um. Salary rates for, for, like locally, and it was coming up in the range of like fifty to sixty-five, something like that. So if you're kind of on the lower end, you really could. These are people who are like the, critical to the, the infrastructure of the town, um, who could qualify for living in an affordable unit. Um, so I just wanted to frame that as we're having these conversations about affordable housing, low-income housing. Um, so if you actually go back to the, the previous slide. Um, this is something that I know there's kind of, can be a hot topic, the comprehensive permitting. Um, so I just wanted to, you know, clarify and, and put up some definitions out there. Um, so like I said, and mu- under chapter fortyB, in municipalities where less than ten percent of the housing stock. Is deed restricted as affordable, developers can legally bypass local zoning regulations and build more densely. So, um, I should preface this with Mendon is currently under the ten percent mark, so you are vulnerable to these, uh, comprehensive permitting. If the, the developer, um, proposes a development with, um, that incu- that includes long-term affordability restrictions. For at least a quarter of the units, um, they can be granted these comprehensive permits to build in a, for example. Something that is just a zone for single-family homes, they could build, um, more dense apartments. Um, so it doesn't waive any other like permitting requirements, like building permits or, um, wastewater disposal, things like that. It's just the zoning that gets overridden. Um, however, this housing production plan can be used as a tool. Um, to deny the comprehensive permit. So if we have a housing production plan in place. And the town is gradually adding affordable units to its housing stock. Um, it can deny, uh, comprehensive permits for a, a year or two years, depending on the number of affordable units that were added. Uh, so if half a percent of the, um. Ha- total housing stock, um, was added as affordable units. Um, the town would be able to deny comprehensive permits for a year. If one percent of the total housing stock. Um, was added as affordable units, the town would be able to deny comprehensive permits for a total of two years. Um, it's a little confusing, but.
Is total housing stock just what is on our tax payrolls or?
It's based on twenty twenty census, yeah. And I, I'm, I should say year-round housing stock, um, so seasonal units don't include in that. Um, actually, if you go to.
That's quite some time ago, right? How, and that gets updated with every census?
Yeah, so actually, honestly, until, um, a few months ago, we were actually working up the two thousand ten census.
Oh.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Yeah, the census took a little while to produce their complete results. So people are kinda just waiting, 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 and it's.
So we're twenty twenty for quite some time then, okay?
Yep, yep. Um, if you actually go to a couple slides, next one. Yes, this one. Yes, this one. Okay, so this is the breakdown of, um. For what you need to be at in terms of the ten percent. So the year-round housing stock according to the twenty twenty census, um, is two thousand two hundred fifteen units. So that means you're going to need a target, uh, in order to achieve the ten percent mark, you're going to need two hundred and twenty-two affordable units. Right now you have forty, so you're at one point eight one percent. Um. And then like I was saying, the half percent, if you were to add that, um, as affordable units. That would mean you need to add eleven units, eleven affordable units, um, and then you'd be able to deny comprehensive permits for a year. Or double that, twenty-two units, you add it to your housing stock and then you deny comprehensive permits for two years.
Is that recurring? So every time it goes up by X amount in a year, it re-ups for the five years or? And then like additive, like it's. No, 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 like.
Why would you stay in the safe harbor if we hit the one year?
Yeah, so one year, and then if the housing stock goes up again the next, the next fiscal year, uh, is it up?
Yeah, so we're always working off the twenty twenty census. So even if you're adding market rate units. And your housing stock's going off, we're working off that two thousand two hundred fifteen units. That's always gonna be the basis.
Yeah, I, I don't think I answered.
But the question, at the bottom it says here, number of units the town needs to produce in one year to achieve safe harbor, eleven units. If we produce those eleven, eleven units within a year, how long do we stay in the safe harbor?
Yeah, I think I, I might have not phrased that well. So e- if you would choose, uh, uh, produce eleven units. Um, then you have safe harbor for a year.
And if you produce another eleven units, is it another year of safe harbor? That's my question.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, I would have to look at the timing for that, if that, within that. Year of safe harbor, if you were to just add eleven units, would you get another year? That's a good, I actually wanna follow up on that.
Okay.
How many units we add in a year, does anybody know?
It's probably less.
Uh, I mean, not a, affordable housing, just a total housing.
I think at one point, one of the development, Cobbler's Node Development had. Had a significant amount of affordable units, but then by the time it was finished, the numbers have changed and they didn't keep them affordable. Cause you didn't have to. That, that may, that's anecdotal, that's my memory of it.
Right.
And that's dated now, quite some time.
I was just wondering, like, if we produce twenty houses a year, and this is eleven houses out of the twenty that need to do. I'm just wondering what this means for us, like, as a town, and how many, how should we produce on a regular basis? What impact this has on that? I don't, yeah, understand the relative.
But I can, but I can see based on these numbers, when we talk about making a mixed use development. That has a, a, you know, commercial piece and then also some um, over fifty-five housing. That are affordable for people who have lived in town, raised their families, and they wanna stay here, and they wanna downsize. I can, I can see the, the wisdom of doing something like that, cause you could probably create some of this to get that safe harbor. For a period of time, and I know that last, last year, when uh, Congressman Oshinklaus came to tour our. Our little town center, I, I took a walk with him and, and, and uh, State Rep Brian Murray. And that's what uh, Congressman Oshinklaus was speaking about, was that is the, the, the biggest crisis that the state has. Right now is housing, particularly affordable housing. And we either gotta come up with a way to solve it, or it will solve itself, so to speak.
So those units are created in perpetuity, right?
Um, sometimes there is a year limit put on it, cause I've seen that happen.
They usually cap what kind of profit you could make if you buy an affordable unit, you don't go, then. Live in it for a year and then put it on the market and get market rate. You, you have to return a certain portion of, or percentages thereof. Of the, the affordable, affordability of the unit, so. I've actually done a little bit of this kind of stuff. It's Community Development Director.
Oh, great, great. Now you can do the rest of the presentation. Um, actually, if you go to the next slide, you can just see how. Menden shocks up to the rest of the surrounding communities. Um, the line that goes across is the ten percent that we're supposed to be at, and we're falling a bit short. Um, honestly, you're kind of in the same boat as a lot. I, I work in Southern Worcester County. And I think only four of our communities have achieved the ten percent. Um, so you're not alone. It's. It's falling behind. Um, and when, like I was saying, how we're working off of the twenty twenty census as a basis. Um, in that time period between the twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, um, all these percentages ended up going down. Because market rate units were being built, but at a much faster rate than affordable units. So um, a lot of towns had higher percentages, and then as of a few months ago, those dropped down. So. A challenging time. Um, I don't have too much more, other than um, the next slide, uh. Like I mentioned before, the um, there was a survey conducted as part of the master plan. Um, this is one of the questions that talked about housing. So just to give you a glimpse of what people were kind of responding to and, and what the needs were. Um, we definitely, as part of the workshops, we wanna dig deeper into this. Um, kind of seeing where people would like. More housing and, and just, yeah, just getting, having these, these good conversations.
So like fifty percent of our population, right? That would basically thirty-eight plus twelve thinks that we need this, that's.
Numbers don't add up.
A big number.
I think people could choose more than one.
Yeah. Are you going to talk about what happens in these workshops on a slide, or can I ask about that?
I'll go for it, yeah. That's pretty much all I had.
Yes, when you, when you said you gotta dig into these numbers, and you said you wanted insight on these workshops, can you tell us like? What that looks like when you're in these workshops? Is it like a focus group of people sitting in a circle, or is it, yeah, what is it like?
Yeah, so.
Virtual session? Is there pizza?
Yeah. Um, it can look like however you want it to look like. In the past, I've done, the first half is presentation and question and answer. Um, so a lot of people will come in with, you know, they just want their questions answered kind of right off the bat. Um, but after we kind of go through the slides and, and, and um, start getting into those discuss, discussions. Then we go into some breakout groups, so I'll print out big maps of the town. People will go in and point out areas, you know, oh, I know a guy that. Wants to sell his property and he's interested in residential development. Um, oh, I don't think um, senior housing would be appropriate there. Because it's not a walkable area. Just, it's, it's, um, and then members of um, the committee or working group are stationed at each um. Breakout group, just to make sure people aren't getting off the topic and um, we're dominating the conversation.
Five auditorium with a breakdown and.
Yeah, or something like this, yeah, depends. Yeah, and um, I've done it before where I've had multiple sessions in a day. So we'll have an evening session, maybe held at a town hall or, or something. And um, a daytime session, we'll, we'll, we'll go to the local senior center, um, just so um, the people there, cause it's a really important part of the population. Um, uh, really, you know, vulnerable and living on fixed incomes, so what are their needs and, and get feedback from them, so. It's really up to you, kind of how many we'd wanna do, what we'd wanna focus on, what the structure would be like. Um, but. It's been a really exciting event in the past. People come out of it, you know, um, just excited about this topic. And why I'm, I'm really interested in doing multiple of these is, I feel like people will come to one and we're like, okay, like, that's great, like. But I wanna keep talking about this and, and digging deeper. Um.
Getting that community engagement is so important for this, and getting the community feedback, cause people do have very strong feelings about. Where the housing should be and how it should be, and I think.
Yes.
Like, there's an opportunity, I think, also to share like what different types of housing can look like. Cause I think a lot of people, they hear affordable housing and they just imagine that the high-rise apartment buildings, and that's not. Likely for Menden, that's, you know, that, so like, and I think the, the master plan survey included a lot of different like housing. Types that like people could actually look at pictures of neighborhoods and rate them, and, and I could imagine like a workshop would also give people an opportunity to say like, okay. I could see this, you know, picture of a little like walkable looking neighborhood in this part of town, that sort of thing.
I feel like hitting that misconception, putting that, that uh, finance slide first. Maybe solves a lot of those misconception problems right off the back, since I was, I knew that what that number meant. I didn't know it was so high. So.
Right, that's a good point, yeah.
Also getting a, as diverse a cross-section of the town as you can to attend.
Sorry, I see a hand up.
Oh, it's Ann.
Ann Mazer.
Hi, I just wanted to say that um, um, Emily has been super helpful organizing us. And the committee's made of um, Jack Hunter, Elena, uh, Mike Goddard, um, Tony Jenna and myself. And um, then it was paid for, but the, the, to do the housing production plan with the CPA, CPA funds. But um, Emily's been very, very helpful.
Thank you, Ann.
Emily, did, do you know if Menden had these workshops for the twenty nineteen housing production plan? Like, is that before your time?
It, I did not work on the twenty nineteen plan. Um, I think it was kind of more of a bare bones plan from what I've gone through. Um, it had like all the data in there. There might have been a survey done. Um, but this, this plan, I really wanna focus on community outreach. And really getting people's voices heard about what they need and, and how they're struggling with affordability, cause sometimes, you know, we know, not realize that our next door neighbor is. Really struggling to stay in their home.
We, we've heard this about, you know, people who work in town having trouble affording to live in town. So it would be nice to have that housing stock available for, say, town employees, teachers.
And I think there's a great many people who, you know, they talk, there's a comment here about wanting housing for families, but there are great many families who have. Who have kids that would love to stay in the town they grew up in, and they simply can't afford to.
Yeah.
You know?
And that's, yeah, and I should, also should mention, like, it's not just about affordable housing by the, the, the technical terms of the state. It's about the, the range of housing types, as you mentioned in the earlier slide. So, cause I think we tend to see a lot of new development as single-family homes that are very big. But, you know, there are other options that are not, you know, between affordable housing for, you know, low-income seniors and those. Big, big houses. So like, it would be great to encourage more, more of a range, like in every, every like step in between.
Increase, allowing the, an increase in density, that would allow, you know, developers to afford to.
Right.
They're gonna be able to afford to create.
Right.
Uh, affordable homes.
Some of the discussion we heard at top meeting, when we were doing those zoning changes, were that people didn't quite understand. What that change of capacity really meant, and like why it was important to us, and we had spent a lot of time talking about that. And I wonder if like a year later now, the population has a different look on that. It would be interesting to also try to get those people from that original CBA, like change there to maybe help.
Right, to, right, encourage them to come like to, to these workshops and, and. Yeah, express their concerns so that we can, you know. Consider them like fold them in, you know, fold the concerns into our housing production plan, yes.
Great, I think that's all that I had. Um, there's a few more slides that you can just, I'm not gonna go through now. But um, I went through and kind of added a lot of different data and demographics, um, just to kind of um. Give you a basis of kind of what we're looking at, the, the constitution of the town. Um, you know, it, you can see in some of the slides that the town's getting older. Um, maybe there's more single um, uh, person households. Um, so I. This is something I'll probably go through at one of the workshops. Um, but if you wanted to kind of look at it, uh, it's kind of what we've been working on so far.
Gotta scroll through it so it's on the recording.
Oh, there you go, perfect.
So, so next steps are that you would like to schedule some of these workshops?
Yeah, um. Trying to think how to do this. Um, I guess we'll schedule a working group meeting and.
My suggestion would be to, to work with probably Elena and, and uh, and our interim town administrator. Right, and, and like you were also involved in that group, so.
And, and can you remind, remind us of what the timeline is for these workshops? Like what, when? I know it was on the screen, but I already forgot, like what, what months were you considering?
Yeah, so um, love to start planning these and um, ideally probably, I think things get really busy around December. A little bit, so probably like January, February, when things have kind of died down a little bit.
So like have those.
Yeah.
Workshops then, cause I, I seem to recall it was March that you were hoping to.
Oh, great, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so March is the draft plan and seek feedback, so yes.
Excellent, yeah. And we're a little bit, you know, flexible with this timeline as well, but this is kind of what I was envisioning.
Is there, is there a deadline? So I see, so we have, we need to submit this to um, the state. So is there a deadline? Like, is, you know, is it that deadline or the, the goal for the date of submitting it? Um, is that based on when the previous one expires?
Um, I think that was something we were gonna investigate what the, I can email someone from the state to find out the exact date that expires. I just know it's twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Um, but then there's also just a funding deadline for this, um, for my contract, it's through, I think, the end of June, I believe.
Well, that's a good.
So, good.
That's a hard stop, yeah, okay.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That was awesome.
Yeah, um.
Do you have any other questions?
And Emily, did you bring out the printout?
I brought some printout, so they're like.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, um, and yeah, my contact info is on that as well, if anyone wants to, to reach out to me.
Sounds great. All right, thank you, thank you so much.
Next, discuss electricity aggregation.
You guys learned so much today.
Hey, everybody.
Welcome.
Hello. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I'm Carolyn Barthel. I live at uh, Fifty Asylum Street. And I've been working with Ann Mazer on green aggregation for this town. And we've been working on this for a long time, and you know, hopefully we'll get there. Um, I'd like to introduce Mark Capadona and Denise Allard from Colonial Power. Um, I, you know, you all have some background about uh, how, you know, you all sent this letter in to the State House. Uh, to, to support the legislation that supports um. Reforming uh, aggregation, green ag- um, community aggregation. And, and then you also were very helpful in sending in comments, so I appreciate that. So, take it away, Mark.
Good evening, Mark Capadona, from Mount Royal Lab. I'm Marlboro, Mass.
Hi, I'm Denise Allard, also from Colonial Power Group.
So tonight we're here to talk to you about uh, municipal aggregation, so I'm just gonna try to level set back. In August of two thousand and nineteen, we filed, refiled the town of Menden's plan. In June of two thousand and twenty-three, you got a, I'm gonna, I, it's not an order, it was a directive to um. Refile your plan up to today's standards. So the department left you sitting kind of on the side. And then said, would you do us a favor and please meet these latest standards, which was uh, the city of Fitchburg's order. As well as update your plan for anything that was in, uh, what, what is twenty-three sixty-seven in our guidelines. So what we're here in front of you today is um, a decision around whether we should update the plan. So, starting today, as a matter of fact, National Grid's new rate is going to be eighteen point two one three. So we wanted to see if, if the town wanted to have us file a plan. Right now, the market's somewhere between uh, fourteen, I'd say thirteen and a half and fifteen and a half. So you could deliver some savings and, and add some green as well. The problem with that is, we're not certain what the department will do with your filing. We don't think bringing it up to, um, we wouldn't want to file a plan as requested by the department. So what they're saying inside, this is just one of the things, they're saying, if in your aggregation, you went out and you um, got ten percent more renewables. Mass class one renewables, and for some reason, the next contract, the, the rack market tanked, and you could go to twenty-five percent and still drop the rate. They're saying anyone that opted into that, uh, into that product, would need to be sent back to basic service outside your current aggregation. Which we don't think is a very good thing, just causes customer confusion, a- a- and doesn't actually help with what you're trying to do here. From a green renewable standpoint. So.
Why, why can I ask? Is there motivation to do that?
I think it's an excellent question, sir, but I, I, I cannot answer you. We, we do plan on fighting them in these regulations, twenty-three sixty-seven. To bring everyone, um, with your help, we're hopeful that we'll get a conversation like this, it's called the technical session, and be able to hear their side of it. Unfortunately, the last, this is gonna sound odd, but four or five years, the department has been non-responsive to anything municipal aggregation. So we have no idea what they're thinking. So the good news is, is we hope to be able to get them to the table, and with your help, which you've already done, we're able to do that. What we're in front of you to, tonight is, we would like to be seen as making sure that you have, aggregation is about local choice. Our concern is, if we file something with the department that doesn't meet their regulations, they file an order for. And we've seen it happen, they file an order that Menden do X, Y, and Z. You're now under the guidelines that, that are out there right now, they're not approved. You're now under the guidelines that, that are out there right now. They're not approved. They're asking for a launch window. Which means that you need to put a, 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 a date in your filing. What I want to say is we're going to push back on that as, as much as we can, but we're hearing that's coming. It's one of the reasons we do want to file so that you're not subject to that. But they could tell us that we are subject to that. We have seen them force issues on us. So what we're saying is there's a little bit of risk in what we're asking you. If you'd like us to file a plan right now, there is risks that they do what they've been doing the last few years. Brand new administration, brand new chair, but there are risks that they come back and say, we want you to do X, Y, and Z. We certainly have the ability to, to appeal, ask for a motion for reconsideration, but it's just a delay. We wanted to make, yes, sir.
Right now, we're not in a plan, right?
Right now, right now, you do not have an approved plan. That is a correct statement.
So, so basically, all the townspeople are on their own to make whatever arrangement can out of the market.
That is a correct statement.
I just re-up because I knew the numbers were going up today. So yesterday I tied into a, I don't recall which one. But ac- actually interestingly enough, it was our FinCon Chair, Mike Crager, that had put something out on one of the social media pages. You know, and he had done the whole breakdown and what was the best one. It was a place to point and click. That really allowed everybody to watch it to, to cap, capture a lower rate. But for an awful lot of people uh, in town, they don't realize that. They don't know they even have a choice. And they're just accepting, you know, what's on their bill and, and they don't know what to do about it.
Completely agree. Uh, just want to state, there is a website out there. It's called energieswitchma.com. And it shows you all the offers for, for Menon. It's tremendously helpful. The one thing I want to tell you is the Attorney General has said, you must be paying attention because it, the original term of that, they will, they're, you know, they're required to honor that rate. It's what happens after that.
After that expires. It's only locked in for a year, I think.
They're all different.
Right. They're all different. Right. If you miss it.
Pay attention.
Pay attention, right?
That, that is a correction. That's all I'm saying. It, you could, because the rate is now much lower than it was. What everyone here was exposed to last, went to the thirty-three, um, almost thirty-four cents. I think it was thirty-three, eight, nine, one. So we're literally in half, but just giving you a historical perspective. That's the, the eighteen two one three is the second highest rate only to the thirty-three. That's the kind of lofty rates that we're talking about right now. But what we're asking you as a group is, do you want to take a chance? Have us file something with what we believe will get you out into the marketplace sooner rather than later. But I, I do want to say this, the department could just sit on this. It, there's no, they're judge, jury, and executioner. So.
They're just proposing that we wait for a period of time or?
What's the alternative?
I, I do have a couple of other questions. We have a few, um, pilot, you know, payment in lieu of taxes programs around town with solar. You know, solar farms. Does, does this potentially have any effect on any of that that's already in place? And what about the folks that actually have solar, um, on their residences?
Great question. All of that will work. So that's a utility, um, what I'll call a utility contract or relationship. All of that will stay in place. Nothing will change. They work mutually exclusive. So if you said that National Grid is indiscriminatory on whether you're on supply, competitive supply, basic service, or an aggregation. Net metering works with, with all of it. With all of it. That is.
The one doesn't affect the other.
That is true.
That's a great, that, that, that's great. You could answer that.
So, so I had a question. So you're coming to us and saying, okay, option one is we file, um, with some inherent risk. Option two is what? Wait for the House bill to resolve itself and then file?
So two things. First, great questions. So the, these regulations are in play. That something came out with the definitive answer in this docket, twenty-three sixty-seven. The department says, we've ruled on this. This is how you have to move forward. Then we can tell you definitively, we don't have a choice any longer. But until that happens, the next one would be you step over those regulations to legislation and that legislation gets in, uh, gets implemented. That would have to be done by July thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. To get done in this session. Not saying it has to be done.
It's election year, so.
That is a correct statement.
Turns into a ghost town.
But by July thirty-first, all legislation will be devoted on. So in this, in this scenario, we could take a chance and file something. Or you could just sit pat and wait. We, we currently have filed for an extension because we don't like the order you, it's not even an order, the direction you've received from the department. So that's the current, where we are right now, we just don't want to be seen as not, not giving you an option. That option, and I'm, I, I'm in front of you, I do this twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I'm not certain what the department will do when you file. I just want you to know, we would not file with what they've asked to be filed. Because I believe it handcuffs you moving forward and I wouldn't do that without the regulation being in place.
She's just, we just sit and wait.
That's not what I'm suggesting. I'm saying, I, I personally, we're, we're happy to file. It's just, it comes with risk that I can't quantify. Yes.
It seems like you're, you're not in a position where you want to provide a recommendation per se. All the words I keep hearing, I would agree with the chair to say, it sounds like mitigate risk, sit tight. Let everything get through the process, then we revisit filing a new plan. That's what I'm hearing.
Actually comfortable with that decision. I just want to make sure, as your consultant, I'm giving you all the options that are on the table. That's my job to allow you to make a decision. I will agree with that, with, with your analysis.
Yeah. So based on the history, what's the likelihood if we did file that we're going to be able to enact anything before the legislative session anyway? In the next. Oh, I'm saying, so we do decide to file to get some relief in the short term. I said, what's the, what's the likelihood that we would get action on that or implementation prior to us knowing one way or the other?
I would say slim.
Okay.
Tonight. Agreed. Yeah.
The, the one other thing I, what I, I want to have you tell them is that, okay, so the winter is going to be eighteen point two one three. Okay, so they are now, uh, the utilities are now changing what their six months period is. They're shifting it so that, I didn't know this, but all the utilities are not, have not been on the same schedule. Which I thought was kind of weird. But, um, they're now going to all be from February to the end of July. Um, and then from August to the beginning of, to the end of January. So that, that kind of straddles the, the worst of the winter and it kind of evens out the, the costs over the course of the year. But obviously, you know, we've had yo-yos, uh, you know, roller coasters, um, in the last several years. And certainly this last year was most disastrous. But, um, I, I also want you to, to ra- raise the question, what would, might, might happen to the, to this, the next round, uh, that is currently eighteen point two one three.
So I, I would expect, so what, what National Grid is going to do is they're going to smooth things out. So if you're an electric heat person, this is a wonderful thing. Unfortunately, as i- in total, for, um, ISO New England, where summer usage, meaning air conditioning, pools, those kind of things, we use more electricity to the peak, is we're going to have higher prices during those summer months. So what we've done is National Grid, all the high prices, believe it or not, this is all driven, this high pricing by December, January, and February. Those are the, just, and that's why they split it between February, January and February. Going forward, this next, it's the nine months that, that you'll be exposed to the eighteen two one three. Following next, and then in August, I don't expect the price to come down very much. Just let me explain. So next winter, you're going to have an August price that will have decent Jan in it. I expected that rate to be very, given market conditions today. We continue to stop more wars, all bets are off, but I would expect, given current market conditions, you'd see the rate to be very similar to where it is, maybe slightly higher. So the amount of time we have right now is going to be somewhere around fifteen months where I think you could deliver savings. That's with a quick order. Uh, that's, I'm talking foolish right now because I don't expect that. I'm saying to you, I do expect. And Denise, I've, I've thrown at you everywhere between six months, right? We, we could get something filed by, by say, middle of December. And maybe we heard sometime, you, you know, May or June of next year. That would be lightning speed.
It's a couple of months to go out to bid from there. You have to get pricing, secure pricing, do a mailing to everyone in town who's on basic service. Allow them a thirty-day opt-out period and then launch the program. So that's, that's about a two to three month lead time right there. After you receive the order and get executable pricing that the town would be comfortable signing off on.
Anne?
Yes. Oh, um, so I think Mark and Denise are wanting to offer this because the rate is so high. And if DPU responds favorably, they could come back to the town and give us a really good package. Um, if it ends up they don't, and there is the risk, the town could always say no. And, and we've been waiting four years right now and we haven't had the municipal aggregation. So I don't feel like we'd be losing anything because we don't have it now. We've been waiting so long. So that's, you know.
Go ahead. Just trying to, so the, the, the question before us is do we file or not file, right?
Correct.
If we file, the pros are we potentially get to a good place faster. Is it going to accelerate towards a lower rate for the community through aggregation? The cons of filing right now is that you, we may get an order back saying, giving us, um, direction under the current restrictions, which you don't like.
That is correct.
Right. If we don't file, it's status quo. Individuals are at their ability to do what they need to do individually, uh, but it's, but it's status quo.
Correct statement.
And the, the pro there might be let the legislative process flush out to the point where we know exactly what the what the rules of the road are going to be. And then we come back and do we file or not file at that point? Is that fair?
Once those rules are out there, we'll file because we have no, as long as you want to move forward under those rules.
But it'll be another decision to file or not file.
That is a correct.
There's no downside for us doing this aggregation. I mean, that's the whole point.
Into, in today's world, there's no downside, but some of the new rules, I'm going to say to you, we would never start an aggregation, have never started an aggregation above market, but with a launch window, I don't know where the department is. But anyone in this room knows what the electricity markets are going to be, uh, six months from now. If I did, I'd, I'd take everyone down to the Caribbean. We could do this down here because it doesn't even make sense what they're asking.
The last question though, in terms, we don't know, have a timeline for flushing out the legislative process because that, that could go on for another four years.
That is a correct statement as well.
The, the, are you talking about the legislative or the DPU?
By July, but the D, the, the, what the.
Twenty-three sixty-seven, the regulatory.
Sixty-seven could go.
Who knows how long the process will be for the.
I expect long. And the only reason, the only reason I'm saying that we're asking for a technical session and they're going to say, ah, you're holding up the process and so forth. But I, I do expect that you're going to see some less than favorable movements on this launch window. Uh, they, they're trying to protect basic service and they feel like municipal aggregation is causing, um, what I'll call additional risk premiums on basic service, vis a vis driving up the price of basic service.
Aggregation would actually drive up the price for everybody who stays with the basic service.
That, that is a correct statement, sir.
So they're trying to supposedly protect those who are the, the least savvy by staying on that basic service.
That's true, but I just want you to know, fact, point in fact, what, what they're proposing does not do that. It does not go past the, um, the procurement. So it does not help, uh, mitigate risk. We need to get in front of the department to at least state the case, but I'm, I'm, I'm here to tell you, it does not fix the problem.
Don't they, don't they know that? They're just concerned that the public won't understand it? And will take it and will misunderstand it and take it in a negative way?
Every source, another utility has said, it does not mitigate the risk that you're trying to get rid of. They said it in their comments. So I, I know that they're aware of it, but I'm, I don't know that they'll back off it. I, I'm not, I just don't know.
If, if we were, if we chose not to file tonight, and we meet in two weeks and we change our mind, we can file, contact you and file.
So two weeks, one month, three weeks, maybe three months. Maybe, yeah, that, no, no, there is no emergency here. Our job is to bring you market conditions and that's what we're trying to do.
I'm just thinking that the way it is right now, not helping anybody and, and it really, could it really make it worse if we file? That's the question.
I think it would make things, so I, I, I wanted to say, we had this exact same conversation with another town, a town in Burlington, Burlington. They, they had exactly the same decision. You just said, given the uncertainty, I'm just going to stay pat. But.
They're going to, you said what?
They're going to stay pat. They're not going to file anything. They're not going to file anything.
Well, they're going to wait, Mark. I, they're going to wait for, to see what happens with the technical session, right? We need to hear back from the DPU. We're asking for a technical session the week of the thirteenth. If granted, and we can get in front of the chair or the commissioners at the DPU and have a productive conversation, you know, we have to report back. Um, what happens there and then reevaluate.
We sent support letters for the technical session. I would think we'd want to.
We could wait to see what the result, that, that, that was my, don't hold your breath for the technical session, but again, I want to thank you.
But, but I mean, we could like at least wait to, for the scheduled session and see what happens.
Because we, you know, because we asked, so the least we should do is wait, you know, until that date passes that we asked to have the session, right?
We, yep. I, I don't have any trouble with that path forward. I, I, it's conservative. Like I said, normally when I'm going to be in front of you, I'm going to be fairly definitive. This, I don't know what the department would do if we filed. I just feel bad that the town is going through another winter like they went through last one.
I know, but, but the issue is if we file now, after we've already asked to get, to give the technical session, we have, actually have to wait for them to rule on that before we take another, we, we should, I think, we may ask that.
In the path forward, I'm just saying that they issued an order and asked you to come, become current. You, you did ask for the technical session. Yep.
So that was our response. So now we're waiting for them to answer us back.
Right. They didn't give us a time period.
We kind of gave them one. By a certain date, so.
We, we have kicked, yeah, I, I forget, I believe we have asked, so in your order, they gave us ninety days, then we asked for some, some more time. Not a problem, by the way. That's not a problem. I believe we just filed last Friday for like December twentieth.
December twenty-second. We pushed the town's docket off to twenty-second to give us some room around the technical session and see what happened after that. Um, so two separate dockets, but we'll, we'll, we'll wait to hear back about the technical session. And then that gave us about a month past that time to make a decision, um, for a filing with the town amendment.
But what is the date? You're looking for the technical session?
The week of the thirteenth, November thirteenth.
Correct. So basically in two weeks, we'll know whether that happened or not. We just table this and put it on the next, the next agenda for two weeks. And if they don't give us the technical session by then, maybe we should file because we just sent a letter supporting the technical session. And if we know in two weeks that they didn't give it to us, well then, if they didn't give us in two weeks, they're not going to give it to us probably before July. So we may as well just file.
Do you expect a response or are they just going to ignore it?
It's a great question.
Sorry, what was the question?
So I'm wondering if we're going to get a response to the technical session, like yes or no, or is it just going to go unanswered?
Up until this point, I would say they would just pay no attention. It's about a hundred and twenty communities. And if they don't, shame on the department. I mean, I mean, but I do expect to get an answer only because good people like yourselves have said, hey, look, we need to get this worked out. But.
They have any, the Jeff, Jeff Roy and the rest of the, rest of the guys in the, the state reps, do they have anything to do with this? Can they put any pressure on the?
So Chairman Roy, uh, he is their boss. Uh, they, they answer to, uh, the T U E. So he, he did, I want you to know, when the bill, we went in and, um, testified in, in, in support of it. And he said that he was going to speak with the chair, uh, as soon as, uh, uh, schedules, uh, you know, allowed. I don't know if that's happened.
You chair?
The DPU chair, uh, Chairman Roy was going to talk to the DPU chair about what, what's going on and how things were going to move forward.
Cause that was what he sent, went to him, right?
Yep. I, I, I will say, I will say this, that the, that the chairman is fully engaged in the issue. Fully understands it, fully understands. He did say he has legislation coming forward.
I, I have one question, and that is, um, will, would, with this technical meeting, would this have a ruling? Would they come out one way or another? And how would that, if that were the case, how would that affect the proposed, current proposal?
So that technical session is part of twenty-three sixty-seven and there's no, unfortunately, there's no deadline. There's, they never put any deadlines on themselves. So the department could drag this on for, we could have the technical session the week of November thirteenth and hear nothing for them for twenty-four months. It could happen again, but.
But nevertheless, we're at a point right now where we sent a letter asking for the technical session. I think we need to wait until we get an answer before we. Make, do any other moves.
You're saying.
Yeah, no answer, right, or the date goes by and we don't get an answer. There's an answer in itself.
Understood.
There's another, December twenty second was thrown out there as a date regarding Menden. What is that date and what happens if we don't do anything by that date?
So, oh, that is the original, back in June, they gave you a, a directive. It wasn't an order. So there's no compliance filing. They asked you to bring your, your plan current with uh the latest regs that, by regs, those are the latest orders. That would be Fitchburg and so forth. That was the last order, and I don't wanna get too technical, but at that date, we just have to make a decision. Okay, we don't like what we see, we're gonna kick the can, or we wanna file something and we're gonna file something that might be slightly non-compliant with the current. With the current regulations, not twenty three sixty seven, cause I don't believe that'll be, we just need to make a decision by then. We need a little bit more time, probably, most likely, we get past this uh um technical session and nothing happens in that week. There we have Thanksgiving. If we don't hear anything, we're probably gonna ask for an extension again, probably kick it out two more months. Just to protect the town.
If anybody, unless anybody feels strongly differently, I, I think we just should just. Leave alone for a couple of weeks and put it on the agenda for two weeks and see if there's any movement. So, yeah, I agree.
We, we have no idea when, uh any way of knowing if and when the DPU will respond to this technical.
Well, that, that's true, Carolyn, but, but the point is, you asked us to write the letter, we wrote the letter and we asked for this. So I think, you know.
We asked for dates.
We asked for dates.
No, that, November third, the week of the November thirteenth.
So we asked for the week of the thirteenth, so I think we have to wait. At least, and I don't thi, I don't think we lose anything by. Right, until that date passes. I, I mean, I, I'll stay silent what I think is gonna happen or not happen.
Other vibes.
You know what, and, and if Jeff Roy said he was gonna talk to somebody and make something happen, he's pretty good at, at doing that.
I, I can tell, I can tell you, I, I have my full confidence in Mr. Roy. I, I, I really do.
If push comes to shove and the DPU sits on all this stuff, including this new proposal. The, the, our saving grace theoretically will be if it passes in the state house. That if the, the legislation passes that is in the, yeah, yeah, crossing fingers. So that, that is, that's our backup, hopefully.
If the department doesn't play ball, there's legislation H thirty, uh thirty eight fifty two, and that would override anything that they, they do.
And that's the July, it's gonna be cleaned up, that legislation.
Yeah, that's when the session ends.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Town administrators report.
First thing, uh, we have a meeting tomorrow night, seven P M with the uh town moderator, Tom Morelli. Uh, we're gonna review the warrant, discuss quantums in terms of, you know, if there's only one that would be significant, and that would be the prior year bill. Which is a nine ten split, rest of some majority. Uh, the motions are done, uh they've afforded the town council for review. And uh, and I've given a copy to the town twerk so that they can start putting together whatever the. Presentation is going to be that, that is presented at town meeting, cause I didn't know how that all worked, but I was informed of it. Uh, the record room, we have the RFP finished from the architect slash consultant. Um, I forwarded that on to Kara just for a quick review. Uh, my goal is to have that out within the next three weeks so that we can, it's a. Uh, uh, a general contractor kind of bid where we have sub bids filed. And the sub bids have to be what they call D K F certified, uh and the general overseas. Uh, the subcontractors, so there'll be like two phases to it. Hopefully we can get it done, uh get a, a vendor or a contractor selected in December. For a start sometime in March, April, so that we can finish it up by December thirtieth.
Uh, there's a Carl Homel has his hand raised. Carl, was it, hopefully that wasn't about what just walked out the door.
No, no, it's not. It's about, uh, uh, if you're, if you have of time available, I'll, I'll speak after the. Town administrator's report is done.
Is it, is it about something on the agenda?
Uh, if you would, were able to consider the appointment of a conservation agent while I was in my training class.
Yes, we did. It's already done.
Oh, good. Okay, then I'll work with Jen on setting up a training.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we're, uh, okay.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your train of thought. Uh, just a question on the, the record room project. Um, are there any upcoming deadlines uh that were at risk of not hitting or?
At this point, I think we, the RFP was forwarded to uh Ross, uh. I think his last name is Delkin at Mass Historical, uh, he, they were, we just got him on Friday. So, you know, I, I'm sure he's gonna take a review and say if it's okay, not okay. But I think at this point, I think we're on pretty solid ground in terms of.
Perfect.
Doing what we had promised to do in the various meetings we had with Mass Historical as well as. Uh, you know, talking with them about what needs to be done and, and how, how it was gonna get done on a timely fashion. There was a concern at one point. Whether or not uh we had the uh capability of producing the document that we now have. And uh that all worked out and we're moving forward. So it, you know, the goal will be to have it completed by June thirtieth. It's a fifty fifty match, uh sixty-five is us, sixty-five is, is the Mass Historical. And they'll put certain restrictions on the building as a result of them spend, uh, you know, spending money on a, a town building.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, uh, water filtration system, I got an email from Carol Laporte today from McClure Engineering. She said basically the D, the period which the DP, uh, D, D E P reviews the application. Is coming to a close, it'll be in a week. I guess they had one quick question was supposed to be answered today. If we get the approval next week, we already have hired and contracted a company out to come and install a filtration system. The one final question would be whether or not they do a subsequent inspection that could potentially hold it up, but. This has been a long time coming and I, I think, I think we're finally coming to the end of it. And I was told that uh one of the things when we discussed hiring a vendor for the filtration system. Uh, we had three uh potential vendors and we talked about the different qualifications and all of that. And the person that we chose was number one, the lowest bid, but also. From the consultant, they said that they were all comparable in terms of the skill and quality. They could mobilize faster, so we said that's what we want. As soon as it's approved, we want them in there the next week and getting it done and getting water on the building. We had a department head meeting yesterday. Uh, one of the items was on, was on capital planning. Jody was there. Jody was very helpful, actually, in terms of. Outlining the plan that we're looking at presenting to the board at the next meeting. There was a lot of discussion about the asset inventory and what that was gonna involve. We were originally gonna use a paper form. Uh, we decided, well, we haven't really decided yet, but the thought was using some kind of a Google form. That each of the individual departments could fill out.
I'm gonna just throw in there, uh, office forms is built.
Yeah, it was the only thing I was.
Spread our data out.
Well, it, it, it was.
Jody, are you aware of that?
Okay, um, the, uh, the idea was, is that we didn't wanna do the data entry. Once the form is completed. It feeds into a spreadsheet and then we can manipulate the data as we see fit. The second part of that is getting together. The actual documents of what we're gonna try to do in terms of, you know, for requests, how the requests are approved. Uh, remobilizing the uh capital planning committee, you know, and, and then basically building out a five-year plan that will. You know, address uh the needs of the community over a period of time, making the town making a commitment to, to put money into the plan. On a yearly basis and looking at revenue uh in terms of uh, you know. You know, bonds that are expiring, other debt and timing that debt in such a way that once it, you know, there's no interruption, we, it keeps it at a level pace. So, and that's, that was a, uh, another point. We had a lot of questions. It was a really good discussion, actually. I don't know, Jody wants to add anything to that or?
Back to the points collection, I mean, there's a thousand ways you can do it. I think David was very resourceful and, and making it as efficient as possible and I. Think that part of the feedback was, you know, there are um different departments that have a very small um. List of capital needs, if you will, and there are other departments that have, you know, spreadsheets, right? So I think that um, there's. Brand collection um avenues that we can pursue and, you know, we'll, we'll be able to, to work with everybody, you know, according to what is gonna be best for them and. Um, it was exciting and um engaging to be able to have, you know, a good response and um some collaboration. So that was really good and I'm looking forward to being able to share what we learned.
Yeah, we'll have something for the next meeting. It was interesting too, what, you know, just from an informational standpoint. Of what people thought were assets, you know, as an asset. So we defined it twenty-five thousand dollars, five-year life. Not a indoor, but one or the other. And then the question came up, well, how about services? Well, yes, services are. An expenditure, if it's not part of the operational budget, then that's something we're gonna, we wanna take a look at, uh, long range.
So there's capital plan.
A lot of discussion about facilities meetings.
Planning for things before, I think, break and then we're asking, you know, the finance committee or sitting before the board and. Um, really just being able to do this needs assessment sort of across their department and then. Um, getting them to sort of think about things that maybe they hadn't considered, right? But it's in their purview, so it's really just. An opportunity to leverage the subject matter experts of their area, right? So the department heads and they know their. Their staff, their buildings, their needs best, and so we're really trying to tap into that and. Um, let that lead in those ways and then really be the con of the world that comes together. Um, then you can sort of bake that whole thing um and come up with a comprehensive view of everything across towns.
You touched on the facilities, but there are certain things that maybe no one sees themselves as the accountable party for.
So, yeah, that's all, yeah.
Like the uh finishing the town hall renovation.
Yeah, we had a discussion about that today, actually.
Yeah, it's kinda curious. Are there other things like that we gotta consider where instead of letting fall through the cracks that? And maybe it'll come to mind when we see.
I, I see the two, the capital plan, and it's sort of just, it's becoming cleaner, the capital plan and. Looking at the quote unquote, I keep using D B W, but it's, you know, it's a superintendent of director or director of grounds and highways or whatever. End up being, uh, you know, and having somebody under them. And, and the classic example was when the rain was coming in the buildings, who do you call? You know, it's like, oh, it's no person. No contact person that has all of the expertise needed to address those quick type of situations where. You need an answer quick, they have contacts, they get the phone and, and the problem gets solved. So that, that's part of it.
There are, there are things and projects that have been done, but haven't gotten over the finish line, and so that's, that's. Right, so there are things that we, we need to identify that we need to take over the finish line, but then how do we sustain that going forward and how do we? You know, anticipate needs and, and be able to kind of have a plan, you know, to maintain what we just did. Um, and not wait until it gets so dilapidated, now we have a giant project again, right?
So the fir, the first step is to finish what we, what we currently started. We need to finish that renovation, get those outlets put in. Get all that paint and everything picked up.
I have something on that too.
And, and also the, the also thing with the, with the, with the heating system.
That's, I have that.
That's great then.
Yeah, and the, and another interesting discussion, our agenda item was just a discussion about software and what types of software people were using. Are they happy with software that they, that they, that they're using? Uh, is there interoperability between the. Departments that need to share information so that, you know, we're not saying, well, it would be nice to be able to get this information, but I can't. So then you gotta data entry and, you know, the, the information, to have software that sort of integrates the whole town. Not necessarily one vendor, but at least has. A compatibility. You, you don't wanna tear software away from people that use it effectively and efficiently. But by the same token, if you have a software program that has eight modules and you're only using one. Then, you know, what's, what's the point of that? So like, we, we, we're gonna start exploring at least in the short run. Uh, some of the, uh, some of the issues surrounding I T and software. And we had actually discussed at one point about maybe could hiring a, a consultant to, to sort of evaluate, you know, sort of.
Or you have one, I'd ask you, ask the free one to come in and give you some advice.
All right, yeah. I know, but we actually talked, I, I had suggested personally that maybe.
I'm more than happy to give time to that. We've been, a lot of people have been talking about the need for some sort of centralized I T consultant in the town. And I also talked to our vendor about it. Um, it, it, and, you know, it could be anywhere, but there are. All those concepts that you're talking about need to be wielded by a head of something.
Yeah, we were, we were, I had actually suggested an I T committee and then people saying, well, the people, you know, say, all right, it's got a committee together. They're not people that are unders, that may understand governmental, how government works. You know, they're in the private sector, they're doing their thing, and, and not that there's major differences, but there's enough so.
No, but you need people who are working, yeah.
Face pad that extra layer and then distinguishing between what is a training issue.
A training is a huge issue.
Versus.
You plop it on the desk.
Doesn't do what I need it to do. Is that, is that a gap in the tech or is it a training? And we need to get some support around that, right? So there's some work to be done to do that.
Yeah, we wanna identify with.
Gap analyses everywhere. Identify the challenger opportunity for the profile. Still glad to add it to my notes.
So that, that was our. Uh, tax classification hearing. It's gonna be held in next meeting. So, yeah, so we're gonna be saying tax rate. Uh, what else I got? Uh, Green Communities, I thought I was done with it. Uh, but it's, it has resurfaced again. There were certain questions raised about the narrative. Uh, that there wasn't enough detail uh with the recommissioning at the class school. So they've asked me to consult the, the business manager, uh, Jay uh Byer. And he and I have had a conversation. Um, I talked to the person from Green Communities, Kelly Brown, who's been awesome. She um sort of pointed me in a way to, to at least address it so we can finish it up and. It, it's probably two, three hours worth of work and I just wanna get it up my desk at this point, uh, because it's been going on forever. Uh, we had some discussion about the truck John was looking at and uh, they have it on hold right now. We're gonna, I'm waiting for John to come back. He's, he's out for this week, but uh, uh, looking at. The seat, make sure that that's the, the, the item that we wanna purchase with the opera funds and making sure everything is in line in terms of what. We're buying and what needs to be outfitted and that kind of.
When would that come up, like?
What's that?
Would, do we have to, is that, we, we already decided?
Passover on the war. Uh, boiler room, actually the gentleman came in today, Ray Galen, or Gallon. Uh, both the boilers are working, they weren't working, only one was working and the air exchange system wasn't working. So he's been, he's come in a couple times. We got both the boilers working, the air exchange system is working. Um, he, he put a, a pipe down to increase the efficiency of the air going down the hallway. So he seems to feel that we're in pretty good shape. One of the boilers works mu, way more efficient than the other and only comes on when the other. Sort of times out and needs extra heat. He said that's not a bad thing. Uh, but uh, so that's, that's sort of. Finally at a tail end, electrical brother, Lonnie and Dan. Um, uh, last weekend, I can't remember what day it was, and we talked about setting up the room. We got the plugs going in. Tomorrow as well as a plug for the water filtration system. Um, and that's, that's basically.
Where's the water filtration system going?
In that boiler room.
Yeah.
He wanted to put an outlet there while they put two outlets on each wall and this, this television that. Has never been turned on.
Right.
Right.
Is gonna move down.
About whether this, this television was large enough, it's, I, what I didn't really looked at it, it looks like a fifty-five inch TV.
Yeah, for that, for that conference room. And then they're gonna, he's gonna order a camera like this one on top of it, so now we'll have the. Have another space.
Things are, things keep rolling. There were questions about the forty uh Milford Street, about the the donation. There was a do- donation portion of that that came up with the department head meeting. On Milford Street, uh, so we're trying to figure that out. There's a whole bunch of little things going on, as usual.
Well, I just, I think that might just gotta go down into the general fund.
It would be. It was supposed to be set in a special account.
And it's specifically, um, it's special revenue fund. Special revenue that um, the money would be reserved for a capital project.
Who decided that?
That's, that's.
Okay, well, I originally thought it was going into free cash for next year.
Well, it would go to the general, right, so that, so, so is there a general law that actually dictates that?
Yes, and any sale of a town-owned property.
Okay.
Goes into a special revenue fund. For monies to be able to be used for a capital project. So the monies will just be record kept separately, um, enhanced separately.
Okay, so it doesn't intermingle with the general fund, it's it's set, and it continues from year to year, we don't have to. And then, and then, what is it, is it a town vote that decides how to spend that?
That'd be supplemental, capex?
David, is there an update about the T A profile from the Collins Center? Like, we sent our.
I I can give you an update. I I spoke with um, with Michael Hale. And he, he wanted to bring it back in front of this board for another vote again.
Okay.
And I I said, no, you weren't there last week. Uh, the discussion was everybody turned in their information. And you were gonna put it together and he said yes and he would talk to Mary and they were gonna get it sent out and get it done.
I thought it actually come back for tonight's meeting.
I I thought was what I remembered also.
That wasn't the, 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 the idea was that everybody was gonna put it together and then it was gonna. And I basically did was he took everybody's, what what people want in and out and it all got put together in there, sending it to the printer. But, well, I I wanna copy before it goes to Turner because if you got five different inputs saying similar but different things and he just compiles it. It's gonna get messy, right? Yeah, I I, my recollection was we left it to them to to reconcile it because we all put our foot, feedback in. Right, I mean, I I'll put out there, I'd like to see a copy before, final proof before it goes, just so I'm. I I gave a lot of feedback in the first one, so I was gonna see how it, how it came out.
I gave no feedback. So share that with you all. I figured there was enough feedback and we paid them to do that and I just felt like we needed to get it out.
I agree.
So that's why I made that decision, but do think we should see it.
So any other issues out there the board wants to. Discuss or bring to my attention that we.
I just need to get an agenda item, but I will email you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anything else? Post it to a jury. Second.
Second.
All right, good night, everybody.
Have a good night.